Ladies and gentlemen, the Huntsville City Council Meeting is now in session. If you were to have an electronic device that could disrupt this proceeding, please turn it off or put it in a silent mode. As always, thank you so kindly for your help. Also, if you will, please stand for the invocation led by the Reverend Keith Cook and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance led by Kamiah Kristen Slay. Thank you.
Let us pray. Gracious God, Holy One, out of our great diversity comes an affirmation that your steadfast love, which endures forever, is present with us today. For this day which you have given, the gift of the city of Huntsville, and for these moments given to us, we give you thanks. In ancient times, you gave your people covenants and ordinances to uphold with the hope that a more prosperous society might be gained. We would ask that your power and presence be with these leaders who hold offices of trust within our community. May rivers of justice and streams of well-being characterize their work, choices, and decisions this day, so that they may be moved to lead justly and govern well. Grant vision and courage, so that those who work here on behalf of many others may serve this community and your purposes well. We offer this prayer in the confidence of your great love and the hope that never dies. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Ms. Slay, could you come to the podium, please, ma'am?
Pledge allegiance to the Christian flag, one, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the Christian flag and states of America. And to the... Okay, let me just dance. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pledge allegiance to the Christian flag, one. Pledge allegiance to the Christian flag, one, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the Christian and to the Savior who is King.
Council members, we're now at agenda item number three, approval of the minutes. You have an electronic copy of the minutes from our regular council meeting held March 24th, 2016. Are there any corrections? Hearing none, the minutes stand as recorded. Also, under 3A, 3B, we have a special session meeting held March 31st. Council members, we also have those minutes. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, the minutes stand as recorded. We're now at agenda item number four, resolutions and special recognitions. 4A1 is a resolution designating the month of April as Huntsville-Madison County 911 month. The chair moves for approval. Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Mayor Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask, we'd like Ernie Blair to come up, Paul Finley to come up, but also our representatives from Huntsville Police, Huntsville Fire, and our EMA services, and Mr. Webster from our HEMZI services, because all these people play a big part in what we do day-to-day in the 911 center. If y'all would all come up front, and Ernie, come on up and tell us about 911 Day, and we have a resolution here saying that y'all have done great things for the community and would like for you to be recognized for all the great things that you've done for a community. And it's been since 1968 when we got started, is that right?
That's true, in Haleyville, Alabama, of all places. Great to have the team here, and EMA especially, since you're the newest on the team. But it is a team. We have the largest 911 center in the state, believe it or not, bigger than Jefferson County, because we have one 911 center with everybody in it, as opposed to many 911 centers in many cities. So we're real proud of it. There are a lot of advantages to that, especially saving money. I would like to turn it to Paul Finley, who you know as the esteemed mayor of, or previous mayor of, city of Madison, who's working with us on a public education outreach campaign, and he'll tell you about that.
And I know it's dangerous to have a former mayor with a microphone, but I will be real brief. One of the biggest things that we are very proud of, the board and Ernie and all of us put together, was a website that everyone can go to, Huntsville-MadisonCounty911.com. A bunch of great information on there. Most importantly, though, it helps you understand what is a 911 call, and all the numbers that are non-emergency calls for all the different entities in there are also on that website. We also created a video, how to use the 911 safely, how to call 911 safely from a cellphone. And I think that's so critical. We appreciate Huntsville, it's currently running on your HSV1 channel. It's also going to be in the licensed facilities before long. And lastly, one of the neat things that we've done is put together a lesson plan on how to use that website and how to use that video, and it's embedded now in some curriculum. And we're doing pilot projects at both Huntsville High, here in Huntsville, and then James Clemmons out in Madison. So on a rainy day, when an instructor's looking for something to do that's educational and supportive of making 911 better, that's added. So very quickly, that's one of the things that we're doing.
Well, real good. And some of the things we've done in the last year, we have completed a new tower on Rainbow Mountain, and it's a taller tower, a more robust tower, that looks down into the city of Huntsville and the city of Madison better, and it also looks west to all the new development that's going on in Limestone County. So that will improve coverage of our radio system. We have a, what we call a mission-critical radio system that covers the whole county, and it's just that, it's mission-critical. It will work, no matter what, we hope. But we're now looking at, the next step would be mission-critical data, which would be like a screaming 4G data on a network that's exclusively dedicated to our public safety community. So now we'll have voice and data that are both mission-critical. We're also working with Huntsville Utilities to use their facility for a new backup site. If we ever had to evacuate 911, we need a place to go, and right now where we are isn't quite adequate. So we're working with our partners Huntsville Utilities to do that, and several other things. But so we're moving forward, we're never satisfied with where we are, we're moving forward. Thank you for our partners who make this all happen, and nobody does 911 better than this team right here, anywhere.
Thank you, Ernie, and as it was said, we have HEMZI here, we have EMA, we have our Huntsville Police, our Huntsville Fire, we'll have Madison Police, Madison Fire, and Madison County Sheriff's Office, all represented in the 911 center, so all of them do a great job on a day-to-day basis of keeping us safe. Thank y'all very much for coming. And if I could ask Ms. Erin Howard, Erin, would you please come up? Erin is a fifth grader from Mountain Gap, P through 8 school, and come on up here. And Erin just won the state spelling bee. Now where was the contest?
It was in Alabaster, right outside of Bremingham.
Okay, she went down to Alabaster, and she became the best speller in the state of Alabama. And for that, we wanted to recognize her, because she has done something great for this community. And Erin, I think you have some fans out there, don't you?
Yes.
Who are they?
Um, well, I have, let's see, my parents, two of my grandparents, um, oh, wait.
Teachers.
Yes, my teachers, and the pronouncer from the county spelling bee, and Susan McDougal, who sponsors the state spelling bee with adventure travels, so.
Good. So now you can tell, beyond winning spelling bees, she can remember everybody who came with her, and find special people out there, and more. And she's done a great job. But Erin, we wanted to give you this plaque, and it's a proclamation that has lots of whereas, and it talks about all your achievements that you have, and you have quite a few achievements all the way through the fifth grade. But now, therefore, we are hereby proclaiming April 15th, 2016, to be Erin Howard Day in the city of Huntsville. So you have your own day.
Yay! Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, and I'd like to ask Steve Ivey to come up. Steve has, if you've noticed, we have a few more young people in the crowd than we normally have, and it's because we've had some state championships. And Steve, would you recognize some of these people for what they've done?
Yes, sir. It's great to live in Huntsville, and it's great to have the youth to recognize and to go out and be representing Huntsville and bringing back the goal, and we really are proud of you. Could we have the Grissom Swimmers to come first? Barbara, would you come up? And Kevin, would y'all please come? Coach Bell, yeah, I'm gonna let you talk about your swimmers.
Oh, good. This relay team at state meet finished first in the 200 medley relay, have Chloe Huey, Mary Northcutt, Allison Hugh, and Gigi Shin.
I have certificates that I'll present to y'all in a little time. Thank y'all, ladies. Now, could I get Westminster to come up? Coach, would you push, Coach Stapler? And Ryan, would you come also? We'll recognize you at this time, too.
This is our varsity basketball team. This year to my right is Trey Petty, John Kendall, Matt Edwards, M.J. Gurley, Larkin Isom, Grant Mullins, Weston Ford, Jared Smith, John Parker, Brandon Norman, Issam Brown, Jackson Kendall, Jared Murphy, and Tajon Whitehead. I'm really proud of these young men, they're a disciplined, low-maintenance group of young people who, in today's terms, take care of their mess. Thank you very much for recognizing us.
In this group, I'm gonna walk down here, we also have a cross-country state champion in Ryan Ford right here. And Ryan, from what I hear, you set the woods on fire when you run, and you're great, I know they're glad to have you at that school. Thank y'all so much.
I'll get your certificates to you, Coach, okay? Andy, you wanna come on up, bring your team?
Yep. All right, we're honored to be here. Madison Academy, varsity basketball team, and this is Luke Tomlinson, Miles Parker, Joshua Langford, Colin Blanchard, Kiki Matthews, James Nix, Adam Hairston, Calvin Bacon, Isaac Tillman, Avery Branner, Jawan, just Jawan, he doesn't even have a last name, it's just Jawan, everybody knows him, like, Jawan. Calvin Walker, Austin Troxel, Wilbur Acuff, and Jack Ferguson. I'm really proud of these guys, yeah, thank you. This is, many of these guys, it's their third state championship in four years, and just that kind of commitment and participating and competing at a high level over time like that is just special. And we kind of put these guys through the wringer, difficult schedule, but they come together at the right time, and so really proud of them. And most of you guys know Josh is gonna be representing, he represented Huntsville in the McDonald's All-American Game, and he'll be playing for Michigan State next year. And so he's just a special player, but all these guys are special and really came together as a team. So thanks for having us, and we're glad to be here, Mr. Battle.
Mayor, I just wanted to give you a few highlights of this year from the basketball. Madison Academy, Trey Perry was a 4A State Player of the Year. Madison Academy, Josh Langford, as you just said, was a 3A Player of the Year, and also played in the McDonald's All-American Game. Johnson High School, John Petty was a 5A Player of the Year, and also named Mr. Basketball, and also Coach Doss was a coach in the McDonald's High School All-American Game. We should have a lot to be proud of. Thank y'all so much.
All right, and we'd like to ask Kenny Anderson to come up, and we're going to, and all the CAFI crew, please come up, because we want to recognize our Youth of the Month tonight.
Once a month, we have the honor of recognizing a young person in the community that is doing something special, significant and important, and it's obviously a big night for Erin Howard. We'll ask Erin to come back up again, because she is our CAFI Youth of the Month. In addition to the fact that she is the Alabama Spelling Bee winner, Erin is very involved in the Kiwanis Club of Huntsville. She is very interested in literacy issues and helps young children to be able to learn how to read. She's a member of the Science Olympiad, the Green Power Car Team, the Mad Team, and she is officially tonight the youngest winner of the CAFI Young Citizen Award. Congratulations, Erin. We have several members of the team, and they're gonna give something to you, and you brought enough people with you to help you carry everything out.
I'm gonna wear two hats tonight, as the founder of Community Awareness for Youth, star 99.1. I tell you, we made an exception for you. We've never had a fifth grader, normally the contest is seventh through the 12th, but when you have the portfolio that you have, we just cannot say no. We're just so proud of you, Erin, and all that you have done. And putting on my other hat, as a representative of Huntsville Utilities, we have a great gift bag here for you, we've got something for your body, mind, and soul. And can you spell money card? No, I was just playing. We got, congratulations, ma'am. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
Erin, I represent Rocket City Broadcasting, and I just want to say congratulations, and keep up the good work, and here is a bag full of stuff.
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 Erin, on behalf of the Optimists Club of Huntsville, an organization that services youth, and have been servicing youth in this community for over 70 years, we want to say we are proud of you, and you represent everything that we espouse. So on behalf of the Optimists Club of Huntsville, I'd like to give you this, as a token of our appreciation.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, everybody.
And on behalf of the Human Relations Commission for the city of Huntsville, and our great mayor of this city, I present you your certificate, Erin, as the CAFI Youth of the Month. Congratulations, sweetheart.
Wow, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Erin. My name's Mark McMurray, you're Chief of Police, so this is Deputy Chief Giles on behalf of Mayor Battle and the Huntsville Police Department. We're gonna make you an honorary police officer today.
Okay.
It's only one day.
I'll take it.
Erin, on the side of every police cart says to serve and protect, and you are protecting our future, you know that, by serving us in what you do. Your dedication and hard work is gonna pay dividends to this community, your family, and you're making us all look very proud. We're very proud of you.
Thank you so much.
So here's your certificate, and Chief Giles has your honorary police badge right here.
Wow.
It's not full-size, but it'll do. And we have...
Oh, yes, definitely.
...your own police patch as well, right there, so.
Wow.
Welcome to the team, and thank you very much.
Finally, Erin, you got enough bags, enough stuff to tote, but we also have your coin from the city. And the coin from the city comes to people who make a difference in this community and make this a better community, so thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Erin's our first recipient, had to have people come along to help carry her loot off there. We'd like to ask Michelle Jordan to come up. Tonight, we have a proclamation affirming our belief in fair housing for the city of Huntsville, and this is in honor of Fair Housing Month, and it has whereas's, 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 but what we actually do is name this Fair Housing Month in the city of Huntsville, and which basically says this is a month to celebrate and honor all our efforts which guaranteed the right to live free in discriminatory, in nondiscriminatory housing practices, and proclaim this month as Fair Housing Month. And Michelle, you just came back from a fair housing seminar, please tell us about it.
Oh, well, thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you, first of all, Mayor and Council, for proclaiming April Fair Housing Month. The city is committed to furthering fair housing opportunities in the city, and I thank you for that. I did have training this week, so we're ready to continue our efforts in Huntsville, and I know that this proclamation will go a long way for the citizens of Huntsville, so thank you.
And I'm not sure I introduced Michelle properly. Michelle is our Director of Planning for the city of Huntsville, also she is, she acts as the Director of Community Development in the city of Huntsville, and just does a wonderful job, and Michelle, thank you very much for what you do. And don't go away yet, let's give her a round of applause for that. She's also wearing another hat tonight, and she has brought the Greater Huntsville Chapter of Jack and Jill to our city council meeting. And Michelle, please tell us about Jack and Jill and the group. I didn't know much about it until you informed me.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So, will the members of Jack and Jill, I know there's some moms and kids, make your way up to the front, so that the audience can see you, okay? Jack and Jill is an organization, it's a national organization with a local chapter here in Huntsville. It's made up of about 30 or so moms and families and their children, and we just work to really give kids an opportunity to be leaders and successful in their lives, throughout their lives. So these are some of our kids tonight, as you can tell, our colors are pink and blue, and they are scholars and leaders and community servants, and we're just happy that they're here tonight. Our president is Dr. Debbie Redmond-Hider, who wasn't able to be with us tonight, but we're so happy to be here, Mayor.
What a great-looking group, smiling faces. Thank you for coming tonight. And Mr. President, that's all the business I have, but I think we have a few more groups that are gonna be recognized in just a minute as we go through the rest of the schedule. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Battle. We're at agenda item 4A, Adoption and Presentations. 41A is a resolution congratulating the Oakwood University Ambassador's Men's Basketball Team on winning the 2016 United States Collegiate Athletic Association/USCAA Men's Division One National Championship, held in Uniontown, Pennsylvania on March 5th, 2016. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. I'd like to share briefly, if I may. Resolution number 16251, whereas the city council and the mayor of the city of Huntsville, Alabama, are apprised that Oakwood University Ambassador's Men's Basketball Team defeated the Concordia College Alabama Hornets' Men's Basketball Team with a score of 80 to 65, winning the 2016 United States Collegiate Athletic Association/USCAA Men's Division One National Basketball Championship, held in Uniontown, Pennsylvania on March 5th, 2016. And whereas the Oakwood University Ambassadors defeated Florida National in the quarterfinal and Rochester College in the semifinal. And whereas the Oakwood University Ambassadors made a commitment to God first. And whereas the Oakwood University Ambassadors shot over 50% from the floor, including 57% in their 50-point second half in the national championship game. And whereas Oakwood University senior Brandon Daniel led the team with 19 points and was named the division most valuable player. And whereas the Oakwood University Ambassadors secured their third national championship since entering the association in 2008, also winning again in 2012. And whereas Jawan Damon was one of 23 student athletes awarded a place on the national all-academic team for having a GPA of 3.5 or higher. And whereas Ryan Williams was named the USCAA Slam Dunk Contest winner. And whereas Ronnie Abrams was named to the all-tournament team. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council and the mayor of the city of Huntsville, Alabama, acknowledge, congratulate, and extend best wishes to the Oakwood University Ambassador's Men's Basketball Team on their victory during the 2016 United States Collegiate Athletic Association Men's Division One National Championship. May you have continued success in all future endeavors. Adopted and approved on this, the 14th day of April, 2016. Will you come forward, please? I'm gonna ask the coach to come up, please. And on behalf of the mayor and the city council of Huntsville, we present this to you and all of these distinguished men. Again, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And Mayor Battle?
Coach, congratulations. Thank you for bringing home another winner. And to all these young guys, thank y'all for doing what you've done to make Huntsville look like a better place. That one down there doesn't look like a young basketball player, he looks like somebody else we know, huh? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Back to you. Congratulations.
I knew you weren't talking about me.
Congratulations.
And again, Mayor, thank you so kindly, and again, congratulations to all of you, keep up the good work, and we look forward to seeing you back here as a championship team next year. Thank you so kindly. You guys take care. 4C1 is a recognition of the J.O. Johnson Jaguars' Boise Basketball Team for winning the 5A State Championship for the 2015-2016 season. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Dr. Showers.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've been trying to have our team come since they won the state championship and had several conflicts, but we are delighted that they are here tonight. And what I would like to do is to bring the coaches up first, beginning with Coach Jack Doss, and then I'm gonna allow him and the coaches to present their certificates to our outstanding players. A delight that we all have tonight, not just this year, but these are back-to-back winners of Class 5A at Johnson High School. As I call your name out, Coach, it's already here, Troy Ragland, if he's here, Preston Bar... Barby, Tay Keith, Dylan Pope, Air Witted, and Arthur Wesley.
and the nation in this way. As I said earlier, not just this fifteen, sixteen year, but back-to-back winners. What a delight to have men that are being led by these coaches that you see standing here, this principal that's in support of Johnson High School. It is just a joy for me to have this opportunity to acknowledge these young men. Coach, I want you to take the microphone now, and as you call the name of your players, if you have comments, you feel free to do that. I would be remiss, Councilman President Culver, because a young man here tonight that I met fifty-two years ago, freshman roommate, I am just delighted to have him here tonight. I want him to raise his hand. Guess what? He's still William Washington. Coach Dawes, we are so proud of what you've done with our young men in this city.
Thank you.
And we're looking for another championship year.
We're working on it.
I know you are.
I'd like to thank the good Lord about being a part of this city, and being a part of the community, and being able to coach these young men, but thank the Mayor, and Dr. Showers, and Councilman, and Steve for making this possible. I'd like for our young men to come up and say their name and what year they are in school. It's always important to be able to speak in public, and we'll present the award as they come up. John Petty was 5A Player of the Year, three-time All-State. He's the highest-rated player since Bobby Lee Hurt in eighty-one. He's ranked number five in the country, top shooting guard in the country, and he's a three-year All-State, fine young man, he's in church on Wednesday night and Sunday morning. I think that deserves a hand right there. So, I'll let them say their name and what year they are in school, and like I said, we're working on number three. On paper, we might be better. And another good thing about this group here, six of the ten made A.B. Honor Roll. We had two of them made straight A's, so we're getting some things done. So, I'll hand it off, and they just come down, and they go back down the line there.
I'm John Petty, and I'm a junior.
I'm Brendan Nickless, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Justin Hopkins, I'm a senior.
I'm Jacquet Hordyn, I'm a sophomore.
My name is Toriya Jamal, I'm a sophomore.
My name is Jamar Jackson, I'm a junior.
My name is Julius Grayson, I'm a senior.
My name is Brandon McCarver, I'm a junior.
My name is Tanisha Cummings, and I'm the Assistant Athletic Director.
My name is Troy Ragland, I'm an assistant coach.
Coach Barby, I'm the assistant coach as well.
Coach Keith, head night grade coach.
Coach Polk, assistant coach.
I'm Rod Tomlin, I am the principal of these fine athletes and all these coaches.
Thank you, Mayor, Dr. Showers, and the people out here for the applause. God bless you.
Guys, we saw one of the best games I think I have ever seen when we watched the Lee-Johnson game, the last Johnson game that was gonna be here in the city of Huntsville, and thank each of you for giving us this very special treat. That was a great night, and it ended in a fitting way, on the last shot, and then the other last shot was missed, and boy, what a great night. That was a great night for basketball, so thank y'all very much for showing us that.
Thank you, Dr. Showers, and again, congratulations to all of our athletes. Let's give all of our athletes and spelling bee winner a nice round of applause. Council members, we're now at Agenda Item 4D, Announcements. Agenda Item 15D has been deleted. And council members, there's no business with outside legal representation. We're now at Agenda Item Number Six, Public Hearing. Six A, public hearings to be held. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution for the issuance of a special shuttle license to Damont Hewlett doing business as Express Entertainment Bus, Inc. This was set March 24, 2016. Discussion, Mr. Brown.
Mr. President, City Council, this application is for a single vehicle that falls under the city's special shuttle licenses. Paperwork's in order for your consideration after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the council on this particular matter? Ms. Reed, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The only question I have, it says Express Entertainment Bus, Inc., what does that mean?
Bus, Inc. is Bus and Inc., the company incorporated. Mr. Brown, would you like to elaborate on that, sir?
The setup of the company is a corporation. It is a bus that will be used for weddings, parties, other special activities, birthdays, things like that.
Okay, the entertainment just sort of threw me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Anyone else from the public wishes to address the council? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kline, second by Dr. Showers. Further discussion, council members? Hearing none, ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Thank you. Six A2 is a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the demolition of an unsafe building constituting a public nuisance located at 3818 Crane Drive Northwest Huntsville, Alabama. Community Development, Ms. Jordan.
Yes, Mr. Culver, let me get my presentation real quick. Thank you, Mr. Culver. This resolution will authorize the demolition of an unsafe building constituting a public nuisance located at 3818 Crane. The property was initially inspected by staff on February 2, 2016, with further review on February 11 by an independent contractor who determined the structure was not economically feasible to repair. An official notice was sent by certified and first-class mail on the 25th of February requesting demolition and removal of the structure by the 28th of March. No action was taken by the owners or interested parties, and we are now requesting authorization to abate this nuisance. The owner and interested parties were notified of this request by certified mail and first-class mail, and may be here tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Anyone from the public wishes to address the council on this particular matter? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed.
Move for approval?
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion, ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Council members, we're now at Agenda Item 6B, Public Hearings to be Set. 6B1 is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property lying on the north side of Holmes Avenue and west of Cherry Street from Residence 2A District to Neighborhood Business C1 District. This will be heard at our May 26, 2016 Regular Council Meeting. Is there a motion?
Move to set the hearing?
Motion to set the hearing, second by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Showers. Ready for the question?
Mr. President.
Discussion, Mr. Showers, Dr. Showers.
Could you, if someone here tonight can give us a define what a 2A District to Neighborhood Business C1 is?
Yes. Ms. Jordan, Mr. McGuffey is coming, sir, if you'll state your name and title for the record.
Yes, sir, Jim McGuffey, Planning Department. Dr. Showers, R2A is the residential district, allows for various styles of single-family and multifamily homes. C1 is a neighborhood business commercial district, it's our most restricted commercial district, allows for small commercial uses, office, restaurant, retail-style uses.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Now, when that request is made, does current resident have any comments on whether they want a business in that kind of area?
Yes, sir, in this particular case, the property owner applied to us to ask for this rezoning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. Any further discussion, council members? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Six 2B is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property lying on the west side of Jeff Road and south of Capshaw Road from Residence 2 District to Residence 2B District. This will be heard at our regular council meeting, May 26, 2016.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Councilman Kline. Is there any discussion, council members? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Six B3 is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance amending Article 44, Commercial Industrial Park District Regulations, Section 44.1, uses permitted to add mortuaries and funeral homes and crematoriums. This will be heard May 26, 2016, at our regular council meeting. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers.
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion, ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. We're now at Agenda Item Number Seven, Communications and Reports. Seven A is communications from the public. As I call your name, if you would go to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, you will have approximately three minutes to address this council. Ms. Betty Galor.
Betty Galor, 3505 Bluegrass Road, Huntsville, Alabama.
Welcome.
The purpose of me attending this meeting tonight is to ask each member of the Huntsville, Alabama City Council to vote against the proposal rate increase to be presented by Huntsville Utilities. I believe the rate increase would add additional hardship to the customers who are already struggling to pay their bills. As Huntsville Utilities is not governed by the Alabama Public Service Commission, members of the City Council are the only governing body that can control the proposal presented by Huntsville Utilities. I ask that the proposal be tabled indefinitely. According to an article in the Huntsville Times, a local newspaper, on Sunday, April the 10th, 2016, I don't believe Huntsville Utilities management had given serious planning to this proposal. The information stated that Councilman Russell asked member of Huntsville Utilities Management if he had a Plan B, and member of management stated, no. Very poor management, in my thinking. Is this what happened a few years ago when the bills were so messed up for such a long time? Management didn't know system, therefore could not teach Huntsville Utilities employees. May I remind each council member, you were not chosen by management of Huntsville Utilities or appointed by the boards at Huntsville Utilities. You were elected by the customers of Huntsville Utilities. Customers supported you, and tonight, we are asking you to do the same for us by not approving the proposal. To the customers of Huntsville Utilities, there will be a city election on August the 23rd, 2016. The mayor and two city councils are to be elected. To the customers of Huntsville Utilities who vote, if your city councilman does not support you tonight, then don't support them on August the 23rd. Customers, if you are not registered to vote, please register by August 8, 2016, to be eligible to vote on August the 23rd, 2016. You may go online and print an application, or go to the Madison County Restoration Office, 819 Cook Avenue, Huntsville, Alabama, across from Farmers Market. If you have any questions about voting, please call (256) 532-3510. If your elected official does not support you, don't support him, and may each of you have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Galor. Mr. Ron Robinson?
Good evening, my name's Ron Robinson, 2452 Mount Vernon Road. I'm here about the utility increase. I am totally against it. After reading the article in Sunday's paper, there is no Plan B. I have one question. That $9.9 million, is that created in one year or over a period of five years?
And, Mr. Robinson, if you have additional questions, you may go ahead and ask those as well.
But, that's a question, because the way I figured it, if it was for one year, which I do not know, that'd be over a five-year period, which they're talking about in the paper, that'd be $50 million. And they was talking about they need $36 million in projected capital expenses over the next five years. Like I said, I am totally against it, especially the way they have it broken down. The article also says there was no Plan B. I'd like to present a Plan B tonight. Plan B would be broken down into two years, four years, a dollar twenty-three every six months, starting in May, like they started out in May and October. This way, if it's just a dollar twenty-three, I don't think that'd be much of a hardship on the people, if this plan goes through. I'm hoping it don't go through, and the City Council restates and relooks at this proposal, because that's an awful lot of money out of a person's pocketbook, especially in the low-income and retired people. But, a dollar twenty-three, two times a year, and it'll come out to $4.92, and they're asking for $4.90 total in one year. So, I just broke it down into two years. I appreciate you having a no vote, and reissue, and re-talk about this again, and let the public have more input. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Oh, I have, excuse me, I forgot. May I have one additional minute?
No, sir, your time is still good.
Okay. Back in February 28, we had a gas leak of storm, I mean, black water leak, some people call gray water. On Sunday, I was talking to some neighbors, and I traced it down Monday morning where it was coming from, and it was coming down from the old post office behind there, there was a gray water leak in the pipe, and it was going- there was a, uh, gray water leak in the pipe, and it was going down the storm drain, across Mount Vernon, down to the creek behind Walmart, then all the way down to Pinhook Creek. I called the, um, Environmental Water people for the Huntsville, and, uh, she had a field supervisor meet-me down there, uh, behind the, um, post office, and, uh, we tracked it down, and he looked at it, and he said, yes, it is a gray water leak.
Mr. Robinson, your time is up now, do you need an extra minute?
Yes, please.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I, um, I left it in the field supervisor's hands, and the next day I had go by there, and I saw a bunch of trucks there, and they were digging it up, and upon investigations with the camera up through the pipe, they found that they had one leak, and then when they fixed that one, they put the camera up again, and they found they had six more cracks in the gray water pipe. So they replaced about sixty feet of gray water pipe, and, uh, and they, they really helped to it, because one night they was working about six-thirty, seven o'clock at night, and they finished up the next morning. And I had to, uh, give Shane Cook, the supervisor for the pollution water, and his crew, uh, Super Mark A, because they already got on to it, and they, uh, put a sanitizer and deodorizer down there, because there was a real strong odor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. And we have two more, um, residents who want to address the utility items, and we'll entertain those questions. Mr. Lonnie Embery or Emberly, I'm sorry. And sir, I apologize, I'm unable to make out the last name, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Basically, very simple, I remember back in twenty-eleven.
Sir, sir, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Lonnie Emery, twenty-three oh five Mount Vernon Road, Huntsville, Alabama.
Thank you, sir.
Three five eight one zero.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, you may proceed. Thank, thank you, sir, you may proceed, yes, sir.
Oh, I basically was saying, basically, we can't, we can't afford it, I'm on a fixed income, and a lot of people are on fixed incomes, that's it. And point number two, back in twenty-eleven, I think we had a, a big meeting, Dr. Showers and Ward, and they told us that this plant that they were building, this, uh, a couple of hundred million dollar plant that they were building at the town, would satisfy the future needs of Huntsville. Now we come with, now you're asking for a negative rate. Basically, I said, just like the late Nancy Wilson used to, Nancy, uh, Bearden used to say, to the city council, just say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Emery. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Kerry Moon. Mr. Kerry. Or? Yes, sir, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kerry Moore, and I'm at, uh, six-two-zero-one Menifee, three-five-eight one zero, this is a code.
Thank you, sir.
I see right here where it says, looking at the paper, says there will be no effect this time on larger commercial or industrial electric customers. I'm trying, I'm trying to understand why would they not get the large conglomerates, but they will hit, like I said, the people that's, you know, that's, uh, that's on a fixed income, when they make less than a fraction of what these big companies make? I'm trying to understand that. You have people that bring in-
And do you have additional questions, Mr. Moore?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to understand that, uh, based on the answer, I might.
We, we're gonna address your questions, uh, several residents have questions regarding utilities, so I'm taking very copious notes, and we will pose those questions to the utility representatives.
Okay.
Are there any additional questions?
Yeah, so, the city officials that, um, that do vote, say they vote for this, that is public record, right?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
It's clear, it's clear that people vote for this, don't give a damn about the poor people, don't care about the poor people.
Sir, you're out of order with the language, sir.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It's, it's, it's clear that they don't get, they don't care about the poor people, so people like that don't need to be over poor people, they don't understand what it's like to be poor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. And before I get to, uh, Ms. Bearden, I'm going to ask a representative from Huntsville Utilities, um, if you don't mind, and yes, we're gonna, yours is about Huntsville Utilities, okay, we'll continue, I'm sorry about that. Ms. Georgia Bearden, Ms. Georgia Bearden, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. State your name and address.
My name is Georgia Bearden, twenty-eight eleven Pulaski Pike in Huntsville.
Thank you.
And, um, it is just so sad that I have to come before the council again. More than half a century after the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four barred discrimination on the basis of race, I didn't think I would be standing here. And what I'm gonna discuss is about race. Everybody get comfortable, usually when we talk about race and discrimination, everybody gets a little antsy, but we know that it exists, and, uh, we might as well acknowledge it. I came before, uh, the council in October of last year, and, um, let me go on the record, President Culver, Dr. Showers, were the only persons that said that they would help me get some answers. To the people that don't know what I'm talking about, uh, I wore a pacemaker for five years that had been on recall, that ruined my health, nobody notified me, the manufacturer, nah, the doctors. And all I was asking, already I'm very well convinced that the system does not work when it comes to an elderly woman of color, we already know that. All I was asking is just get me some answers, just like you do everybody else that stands before the podium, every, I watch the council, um, meetings, people come, citizens come, and, um, everybody can get an answer, but I couldn't get one. Let me say again, President Culver, Councilman Showers, tried to get those answers, they can't do it by themselves. You all are a team. Since nobody from the council would talk to me, I was shut out, nobody would, everybody was told, I, you know, nobody could talk to me, all the agencies that I had dealt with for the last five years, all of their attorneys told them, don't talk to me. When you do that, uh, you automatically guilty by default. Whenever you don't have any comments, when people have problems and you're responsible for something, you just rest assured, uh, that, uh, you have something to cover up.
And Ms. Bearden, your time is up, would you like another minute?
Yes, and, and, and may I come back?
You certainly can come back at the end of council, ma'am, and come back to many subsequent council meetings as you choose, but you do have another minute right now if you choose.
All right, well, I just wanted to say that, um, this is the thing, um, I know that this is a white man's world, oh, yeah, I know, and I get that. I know that when we stand up and recite, "We the people," it's not "we the people," it's "you the people." And I know when I, as a black citizen, present my complaint, uh, that I have to cross all the Ts, dot all the Is, uh, because I'm black, nobody's gonna believe me anyway. I know that what I'm asking, I'm only asking for a level playing field. I see people get up at the podium at every meeting, and everybody bends over backwards to give them an answer, nobody will give me an answer. I'm not asking anybody to add any zeros to my income, I'm just asking for answers.
Thank you.
How people can treat people this way.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Bearden, I do apologize, but your time is up.
I'll stick around, thank you.
And thank you, ma'am, thank you so kindly. Ms. Jackie Reed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. State your name and address for the record, please.
City House, my address, Jackie Reed, Jack Coleman Dry. My name needs to be on that building, I spend more time here than I do at the house. Anyway, I wanna thank you for allowing the public input, I'm, I'm glad you helped a utility up until I get through with a lot of questions, and then I can give the presentation to the public, which I hope that's what you're gonna do. I'm so glad to see so many young citizens involved in our community. I was reading in the Huntsville Times, there was a study being done by Downtown Inc. Commission study, we need five hundred or six hundred more new apartments downtown. You're hurting the real estate business, just like the Zipcar and Uber took the buses and taxi cabs out of business. Why do you wanna live in a big city? I wanna move you all that want to go to a big city, I wanna sell junk out of my house and see if I can't help you all get out of here. I don't want to live in a big city, and I think sixty or seventy percent of the people don't want to either. So if y'all wanna go to a big city, let's take care of what we have in this city before we go to a big city idea. We gotta take care of what we got. I wanna get on the utility since my time's gonna be limited. First, I wanna thank Ms. Joy McGee for the Green Team show that she had down here last Friday, I think it was great, hot dogs and bags and everything that she did, I'm, I'm for her putting in for her raise, I think she's got a lot of department heads that she's trying to keep up with. Some of you all need to look at the girls' pace scale in the city of Huntsville. Anyway, I'm gonna get on the Huntsville Utilities, the rate charges. I go along with this guy on the light industry and, um, large commercial property, you didn't, they didn't give them a raise, and I increase, that's not gonna happen. It's small, the residential's in the small customers, commercial customers. I don't understand that either, I couldn't understand that. I was told that this rate increase is for infrastructure. Do you know what infrastructure is? Sometimes I wonder if y'all know what that is, but that's to help the big money boys and keep on for, for development and keeping on. I'd like to ask, and, and I was told that the, uh, investors are paying their fair share, I'd like to really look into that a little more in details on that, but I would like to ask, how much fiber gonna cost when Google brings it in here? What's the cost of fiber? And I was told that over the years, it'll be paid for. There's fiber, there's smart meters out here, they can tell us how much that's gonna cost, and eleven point five million dollar grant, I was told from somebody at the utility to help the middle class and the poor folks.
Pardon me, Ms. Reed, your time is up, would you like another minute?
Yeah, thank you.
Council members? Thank you.
They say yes?
Yes, ma'am, you may proceed.
I hope so. Anyway, I just would like to see, uh, they got a eleven point five million dollar grant to help the seniors and the people, they say this money's going for that, there's a grant out there, so if you need some help, go talk to them about it. I'd like to ask you all, if it be against the law and the Ethics Commission, if you put on channel forty-two, there's an election coming up August the twenty-third in this city, two councilmen, the mayor, a lot of school board people, I don't know if you can do that, we don't wanna violate the Ethics Commission, but I would like for you all to bring that up, and please, you know, and I know tonight, this utility rate's gonna pass tonight. So, just get ready. Thank you, I'll be back.
Thank you, Ms. Reed, and, thank you. And Mr. Stove, Huntsville Utility items are coming up next, sir, would you like to, I'm sorry, I have one more. Pastor TC Johnson, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Pastor TC Johnson, eighteen hundred Sparkman Drive, Saint McChryston Church, um, just note this first one, report on the cameras for the policeman, that's just, I wanted to do anyway, but on the Huntsville Utilities, uh, few ye, few years ago, we're gonna put in some special water meters, we resourced out the water meter reading, I would like to know how much we save, we were told then, I believe we're gonna save some money, but my bill kept and keep going up, that one thing. Is this the only increase? I understand this is one of three that's gonna be requested over an eighteen-month period, and I'd like to know exactly what that's going to, what it's for. Every time we're told we're getting an increase to pay for something, when that thing get paid for, we never get the money back to the customer. So what are we paying for with that? Well, it may be the fact that now according to rumors, um, the general worker at Huntsville got a one point five general wage increase, which we call COLA, but upper leadership got a seven point five percent raise, uh, over the last couple of years. Don't know whether it's true, but I was told it, so I'm bringing to you, straightening my rumors out like you normally, like you normally do. A few years ago, about, about three years ago, I was paying nine dollars just to have the water, the stuff hooked up, wasn't using it, just hooked up. Today, I'm paying eighteen dollars, and that's only three years, that's a hundred percent, I'm Pike County, but that sound like a hundred percent, increase just to have it there. And so this is our company, and when your company never do anything for you, then you need to fire your company. It need to be working for the consumer, the people who are paying the bill. There are a number of things I'd like for us to look at, one of the things is there's a thirty-two million dollars, this twenty thirteen dollar, million dollar payroll, and twenty-six million of those dollars went to white males, the rest went to everybody else on the payroll. A lot of those did not live in the service area, so I'm not arguing about who's hired and that kinda stuff, but I, I'm saying that if we're paying it in the service area, there ought to be some concern. I know we are, are the, are the engine for the Upper East, uh, Alabama, but we don't, we, Huntsville don't wanna pay for all the engine. Everybody getting some out of the pot, ought to be putting something into that particular pot. So, let me get specific about this, how much money did we pay to meter reader outsourced company for twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, those two years, and will we have saved money just by letting our little eighteen meter readers guys keep reading it? And I know, Mr. Stove and I have talked, and these people are working hard, I'm sure, but if our company is always taxing us and we're getting an increase and we never, can we get one, just give me a zero point something decrease, make me feel like you're doing something. But, but Mr. Mayor, uh, Ms. 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 Culver, we need to ask Huntsville Utility to work for us, the citizen, in every way, and I'm sure they can explain what they're doing with all of this, but it seems like-
Pastor Johnson, your time is up, do you need another minute? Council members? Thank you, sir.
We charge customers a lot of money to come out and turn their utilities off, and then to go back and connect it, and normally those customers who've been cut off are the least able to pay the bill, that's why they get turned off. Some way we should consider that, and I've talked to Mr. Stove and, and, and the board, we elect the board, we elect the board, and the board has the power, I don't blame Mr. Stove so much, but I think we should look at who we have on these boards by, elected by the council, should be looking out for us a little bit more, and that's, I rest my case for right now.
Thank you, Pastor Johnson. And, uh, Mr. Stove, or any of your designee, uh, I will read the questions, uh, to the best of my recollection. The first question, um, nine point nine million created over, is it a one-year period, or is it a nine-year period? The second question is, no effect on large commercial customers, if you could expound on that, please. The third question is, uh, how much fiber is going to cost, how much are the smart meters going to cost? And, Mayor, this is for you, if we can put on channel forty-two, election coming up in August, we run that through legal. Uh, the fourth question, Mr. Stove, is, um, how much can we save on meter reading? Want to know exactly what the increases are for? One point five percent increase for general workers, seven point five percent increase for upper management, and how much money was saved on outsourcing, or spent, rather, twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen for those years? And for our chief of police, uh, just a brief update on the report of the cameras for police, Mr. Stove. And if you would prefer to address- And if you would prefer to address that in your presentation, you can choose to do that, council members, if you all have no objections. Or you can answer those questions now.
Whichever way you'd prefer.
Okay. We'll answer them now. Thank you.
Okay. First of all, I'm Jay Stove, Huntsville Utilities. I'll try to get the answers in that order. The 9.9 million is about what the increase would be. That includes the two recommended increases. There's one we're recommending for May of this year and one in October, and that would be an annual, after that, it would be an annual number. The second question was about industrial customers and why that's not included. That is because the industrial customers pay a demand fee that is passed through from TVA. They have a portion of their bill that is covering the cost, and we did a cost of service analysis that showed that their, their cost was covered. About half of our money comes from residential, and about half of our money comes from others. So that, that's the answer to that one. Fiber is going to cost between 55 and 60 million dollars. That's a project that we would be working on over the next ten years, and it is something that will serve our community, will be able to help us on the utility side of the business. We'll also be able to help the city. We lease part of that to tenants, the first of which is Google, and they will help pay for that. The smart meter project, the electric, tonight, we're talking about electric, is about a $34 million is the smart meter part of that equation. The, I, I don't have, I didn't have the percent increases with me. I can come back, I'll get that back to you. The meter reading is about a 1.5 million dollar per year contract. It was not something that we did in order to save money. It did, it was a little less expensive than the 30 meter readers that we had in the past. We froze the positions for several years, and, and as we froze those positions, we were able to move meter readers into vacant positions. Whenever we did that, the meter reading contract is set up so that whenever it comes time to stop doing physical meter reading, then we can end the contract. So that will ultimately save us money because we won't have to roll trucks, and it'll be safer. So that's a piece of the savings that we get. I think that was, I think that was the questions.
Yes, sir. And one other category was the increases in COLAs, I guess?
Yeah, those are the percentages. I don't, I don't have those. I'll have to get that to you later.
All right, sir. Okay, all right, sir. Thank you so kindly. Chief, thank you, sir. Chief Mac Murray, just kind of an update on where we are with the body cams.
Yes, sir. President Culver, we're currently, by the end of this month, we'll be 100% deployed with the body worn cameras. So we're putting them out at 30 cameras per day. Officers are going through the training and evaluation. All the structure and the infrastructure in the department is fully in place. The downloading, the storage, all that, it seems to be working great. ITS Department has done a phenomenal job building the infrastructure to take this, and everything is right on track, and we will be 100% compliant by the end of the month.
All right, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. Council members, we're now at Agenda Item Number Eight, Huntsville Utility Items. Eight A is a resolution authorizing the approval to purchase three new service trucks. Papa Romeo 10212384.
Move to approve.
Brought by Utilities, motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Clean. Discussion, Mr. Stove.
Those are three new service trucks that will be used to install and work on the fiber system.
Any further discussion, council members?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Clean.
The pertaining to the fiber system, I believe we were told at the past that as far as rate increase, and I'm gonna stay on fiber, Mr. President, but the fiber system was not tied to a rate increase. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, Dr. Robinson?
Will these trucks only be used for installing fiber? There would be other uses, I would say.
So they do have other uses. They could use them for, the primary purpose that we're purchasing them is for fiber installation because they're service trucks that are smaller than the larger bucket trucks, and so the crews will be, it'll be more efficient for them to use them.
Thank you. Mr. Stove, any further discussion, council members? Ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Eight B is a resolution authorizing approval to purchase one new bucket truck. Papa Romeo 10212386.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion, Mr. Stove.
This is, this is a larger truck. It's a bucket truck. It's to get to the higher poles so we can install fiber. It also could be used for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Stove. Any further discussion, council members? Ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Eight C is a resolution authorizing approval to purchase one new service truck. Papa Romeo 10212388.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion, Mr. Stove.
This is for meter technician primarily to use. Again, it can be used for other purposes.
Any further discussion, council members? Ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Eight D is a resolution authorizing the approval to purchase new rollers for installing overhead fiber. Papa Romeo 10212694. Motion by the Chair.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Discussion.
These are equipment to put up the fiber. We have rollers. We're going to put up larger fiber now, and these are bigger rollers.
Thank you, Mr. Stove. Any further discussion? Ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. We're now at Agenda Item Eight E, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a standard form resale rate schedule substitution agreement with TVA, providing for an electric rate change for Huntsville Utilities residential and small commercial customers brought by Utilities. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers.
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion.
So we, we had a public presentation at the, a public hearing last Tuesday. We had a council work session last Thursday. What I planned to do tonight was to try to respond to questions that you have. I'll cover a few topics, answer some of the questions. We have the presentation to go over if you, if you need that, but I think that most of the area has been covered, and you've seen that before. So this first item, which is Item E, is for a request for an increase on, for the May billing period. It is the $2.50 for the fixed component of the residential bill. It will raise about 4.9 million dollars. We will, we continue to try to do what is best for our customers, and we have shown through the, the series of slides that we did previously that while this increase is not something that we come to you, we're not, you don't, not excited about coming to you with this. We do realize that periodically we need this. We have had some questions about the total increase. Some of the questions tonight related to water or to gas and others. And, and when we look at our overall total typical bill for water, gas, and electric for our customers, the bill has only gone up by, with these, with two increases. It'll go up by $7.53, which is less than 1% per year. That includes decreases in the natural gas. It also includes decreases that come through from TVA because of reduced fuel cost. So when we're asked whether we should have decreases, we do pass on those decreases each month, and a, a lot of our bills are actually lower than they were five years ago. The rate increase is important for us because in order to continue to provide the reliable service that we have, and to be able to continue to provide options for our customers, we have to be sure that we have the revenue that comes in. The weather changes that a little bit, and we needed, most of our costs are fixed, and so we're moving more of this into the fixed cost. But the typical resident will still see $2.50 per month, and that is the equivalent, they would be able to install three to four LED lights to replace 60-watt light bulb, and, and they would be able to offset that cost. And we will continue to encourage people to reduce usage, and this will help us ensure that the revenue is stable for Huntsville Utilities so we can serve all of our customers. I, I really would like to answer any questions that you have. I think that might be the best way to do it.
Chairman, I have questions.
Yes, Mr. Russell.
Mr. Stove, what is the purpose of this rate increase?
So we need to make our revenue at Huntsville Utilities less reliant on weather, and so we want to serve a reasonable, fair electric system to keep the system running, to keep on supplying for economic development. This will help us to fund, most of our costs are fixed, as I said. This will help us fund the people, the trucks, the poles, equipment that we use every day. It does, it does pay for some of the infrastructure. It will help us to fund that service. Again, most of our costs are fixed, and this will help us recover that cost.
So explain the weather issue. So if the weather is mild, you don't, you don't get the revenue you need, you need? Is that correct?
When we have strange weather events where we have a very cold day or two, and then we have a, a more normal month, then we, we end up losing money. Last year, we lost about $2 million. This will help stabilize that so that we're not as, as dependent on the weather, and we do lose money whenever the weather is not normal.
Okay, thank you. And, and your business is unusual to me because you really don't control your sales number. You can't advertise more to get people to use electricity. We actually want people to use less electricity, correct?
That's true. It's, it's backwards from most businesses, and we do want to encourage people to use less. We're doing that in several ways. We're, the 11.5 million dollars that was mentioned is a grant from TVA that is on the Huntsville Extreme Energy Makeover Project, and we are encouraging customers to use less. We're helping customers to install new HVAC, new insulation, and drive down cost. We're encouraging people to put in new LED lights. We're encouraging in new homes. We've got a strong program for new homes. So we ask people to use less, and that's one way that they can offset, offset this cost increase.
And, and I think you touched on this, but some of the citizens I represent have a hard time understanding this. Why did you pick to increase the fixed fee and not the price of electricity so that those that use more electricity pay more than all of us?
So, so people that use more electricity still will pay more because it is still 90% of a customer's bill, a typical customer's bill, is in the energy charge. This, this, after the rate increases. And so our business is primarily fixed cost. It takes us the same amount of people to answer the phones, to respond to outages, and to do the work that we need to do every day. And if we put it all in the variable piece, then the revenue comes in in variable, and if the, if the weather is not really, whenever the weather's really cold and people have high bills, we don't want that to be the thing that drives us. So we don't want to live and die by the weather. We want to be able to recover the money the way that we, way that our business works in a more fixed way.
And Mr. Stove, please don't think I'm shirking my responsibilities, since I know that I approve all costs over $25,000, but describe how you manage your costs.
Yeah, so there's, there's lots of ways that we do that. First of all, and the most important way that we manage the cost is that you appoint a three-member board. Two of the members are here tonight. They meet monthly to oversee what we provide. You don't ever get anything that doesn't first go through that board. They spend their time to help oversee what we do to make sure that we're using the resources wisely. We cross-train. One of the advantages that we have is a, we run a water and a gas system in addition to the electric system, and that drives down cost by having all the systems. If you look at other places in the state that have multiple utilities that are not combined, their costs are higher. In fact, even the electric rate for Alabama Power is about 20% more than, than we are. We bid all of our materials. We've extended the life of our truck, trucks. We've increased technology use to try to make ourselves more efficient, and the sign of the efficiency, it's something that we use metrics when we look at other utilities, and the fact that of the 154 other TVA distributors, we are in the bottom 10% of cost is a metric that says to us that we do have low rates, that we do have efficient services, and that we are managing our resources well. And the board looks after that each month.
And I certainly agree with that metric, and, and the citizens I represent understand that. They like to look and compare and to make sure you're efficient. What costs do you expect to rise? I mean, like, one time we had fuel costs that are, for the city. I know we suffered with that with our garbage trucks and things. Do you have any crystal ball, and can you expect any costs that are gonna rise?
Historically, costs rise. I can say that. So it's not a crystal ball. It's more of a history lesson. We do, I do know that a standard truck that cost $15,000 in 2016 has increased by 23%. Bucket trucks have increased by 42%, 46%. Our large substation transformers are now 30% more than they were just five or six years ago. Much of our cost is increasing. We have increasing insurance cost for employees. We have increasing insurance cost to cover for retirees. We have, and we have to manage that. So my expectation is that because costs tend to go up over time, that costs will go up in the future.
And we certainly understand that from the city council's point of view. What would happen if you were to wholesale reduce costs? Some of my citizens have said, hey, why don't you fire half your workforce, or why don't you not buy trucks next year? And, and I know, I think I know the answer, and certainly people ask the city the same thing. Why don't we get rid of half our workforce? And they, and so I'm asking you that question.
We have about 640 employees. One of the other metrics that we use that we've talked about in the meetings, the public meetings and the, and the council work session ties back to the operation and maintenance cost per average customer. We spend about $258 on operation and maintenance on our electric system. Compared to similar utilities, they're $300, $350. Another metric that says that we're managing things well. We're proud of the fact that our customer service area and our response time and our reliability have increased over the last few years, and I don't think we want to decrease that. If we were to start to cut cost as dramatically as you just described, we wouldn't be able to fix streetlights. We wouldn't be able to respond to outages as quickly. Our job is to keep the lights and the gas and the water flowing. Our job is to do that so that the economic development of the community can continue, so that people can still be healthy and be safe. So public health, public safety, and economic development are the focus that we have every day, and we think that the metrics that we use show that we're doing that efficiently. And while any increase is not something that we want to bring to you, we think this is a reasonable incremental increase, and maybe the lowest increase we've ever requested.
And I compliment you and certainly all the workers at Huntsville Utilities. Over the years that I've been involved with the city council, citizens seem to be much happier with the service they receive from Huntsville Utilities. They like the new billing system, the phone system, and they certainly impress when the guys come out at, at all hours of the night in all kinds of inclement weather and fix their problems. And it does, it does happen, but y'all do a great job of getting the power back on. You briefly touched on this, but what are some suggestions for our citizens to save money on their utility bill?
So the, as I said, about 90% of our typical bill is gonna continue to be in the, the usage section. So if people can change the, the thermostat, they can have more efficient light bulbs. Just replacing three 60-watt normal light bulbs with LED light bulbs will save $30. That's the amount of the first increase that we're recommending. And so we have programs in place through the HEM program that you can call our office and, and see if you qualify for that. We have programs where we'll come out and do home audits for you to see if there's recommendations that we can make for you to reduce cost. Separate from that, we also have things that, when, if anybody, if a customer calls, we will try our best to find ways to help them and make suggestions for them. There's suggestions on our website as well.
And if you were to have the meters, I think we call them smart meters all the time, what would be the advantage to our citizens by using smart meters?
Well, so the meters themselves, there's several of them. One, it makes it easier for us to read, but the most important one is that simply by having the data and the information studies are, show that customers can save up to 8% on their utility bill, because now you do not know what your utility bill is going to be until you get the bill several weeks after you've used it. By knowing what your usage is, you'll be able to control it better, and that will save money for our customers. It also will help us find problems that exist. If, if, if there's a problem and something is, a heating element in a water heater or something else is going bad, that can cost a whole lot of money. It drives up the cost of customers, and we will be able to call customers if, for several days, we see a higher, higher bill, and so it provides better information. It also helps us be able to respond to turn people, turn, if new people are coming in, we can turn their power on more quickly, and we can respond. All in all, it makes us a more efficient operation and work better.
Thank you, and I think, I believe that's what a lot of my citizens are asking for, to be a more efficient organization. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr., thank you, Mr. Russell.
I appreciate the title upgrade, but...
You've just been promoted, Mr. Russell. I believe I saw Councilman Showers, then Dr. Robinson, and Councilman Clean in that order.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Stove, I greet people all... Mr. Stowe, I greet people all the time in this city, citizens that live here, citizens that do not live in Huntsville. And I boast that we have 190,000-plus citizens. Just recently, we saw in AL.com report that we were one of the fastest-growing cities in Hunts and Alabama, and that possibly we would surpass Birmingham. With that number of citizens, and more to come, who subscribe to our service, I want to put you on the spot and ask you to give us an idea of what kind of dollars that is as it relates to utilities being used in this city and paid by each citizen who use our service.
So, a typical average customer pays us, after these two increases, it'll be about $126 per month, is for about 1,300 kilowatt-hours of usage. So that's what they're, if a new customer comes in and they're a typical user, then that's what we would expect them to use.
I raise that question, Mr. Stowe, because citizens that I represent are questioning me on what we doing with all the money that they pay out now. But more than that, the citizens that I represent have said to me, no, they don't want another increase today or tomorrow or next month. They're already at a point in their lives here in this city, they are low-income, they have situations where they just can't pay anymore, yet they need our service. But they've asked me, as their representative, their voice, for District 1 to vote no on this opportunity tonight. That's my comments, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Showers and Dr. Robinson.
First, let me say that I've gotten about 40 emails and 10 phone calls about this. Given that I have over 30,000 people in my district, I'm not sure that that's, that that really constitutes a public outcry with regard to this. But there were very, very good questions that were asked in those emails. It's given me the opportunity to do a lot of research, and I thank the Huntsville Utility staff and board members who have helped answer those questions. I have made a concerted effort to respond to every email I've gotten, to answer those questions, to give good information. This is a really complex topic, and one article in AL.com can't cover all of it. I have found that as I have given those answers and that good information to people who have asked questions, their response back to me, in the majority, has been, oh, okay, I understand now. And they're fine with the increase. So what I would like to do tonight, if I could please, is to, for the public's benefit, review some of those questions that have come to me from the public, and then have you publicly share the answers, because I think it will help people get a broader understanding. You've already answered the first one. A number of the folks that I heard from asked about why the proposed increase didn't impact larger businesses, and why we're not asking those businesses to share or shoulder the cost of the increase. Your answer was that they already pay a demand fee, and that residential really has the greater impact on infrastructure, so they should bear the cost. Isn't that right?
Yes, ma'am. The greater percentage of cost for the customer service and the things that we do, yes, ma'am.
The next question was about why we're breaking it up into multiple steps.
So, because ultimately, we need to be able to have that revenue, the $9.9 million in the two steps, and we felt like it was a more reasonable request to be able to do that in smaller increases with a longer warning time so that people will know that the next one will come in October, and we think that works better, rather than coming at one time and asking for a $5 change in the increase. It spreads this out and gives people more information, more lead time to plan for it.
Now, let me just also add to a question that was asked tonight that I don't think has been answered yet, and that, the question was, could we do multiple, stretch it out over two years and do four breaks instead of just two? What would that, what would the impact of that be?
Well, we, so there's a lot of things that are at play here. One of them is ties back to the borrowing of money. We issue bonds to do the infrastructure work in order to have enough revenue to be able to cover that, to keep the high rating that we have, like you do, same way that you have high ratings. We need to be sure that we have enough revenue to cover that, cover that cost. And so, we would strongly like to see both of these increases so that we can cover that cost.
And I'm going to quote this one directly, this, from one email, but it represents the thought that was expressed in a number of them, and I believe it came directly as a result of the AL.com article. "Is the increase required to cover lost revenues caused by less usage of Huntsville residents? Are we penalizing customers who are conserving energy? If there is less usage, then it seems that costs should also be going down. Is that the case?"
Yeah, so on the energy side, 85% of our overall, 85% roughly of our overall revenue is a pass-through to TVA. As energy, less, more energy is saved, then less dollars come in on that energy side. Huntsville Utilities does not generate electricity. We buy all of our electricity from TVA. We have limited control over that, but most of our costs are fixed. And so we, as we see lower revenue coming in, we need to offset that so that we can manage it. Now, we do manage our, the energy as well, because on those peak demands, we've saved almost $18 million over the last four or five years with some programs that we have in place, voltage regulation to lower the demand charge. So we do balance that a little bit. But in general, as the costs go down, that's mostly TVA dollars that decrease. And that's one of the reasons we're good with, we want to encourage people to use less, because most of that money's going to TVA anyway.
I think someone also made a comparison recently that this is a lot like the issue we have with funding our roads, that people are, it's paid for with gasoline tax, people are using more energy-efficient cars or electric cars, less gas is being purchased, and those taxes are no longer there to repair the roads. And so it's a similar sort of thing that we're seeing there.
There's some similarities, yes, ma'am.
Next question was, and you've touched on this a little bit, how much money will be raised? And then the question is, what are the specifics of the $36 million capital expenditures within the next five years? How much by year or for what? I don't know you can do it in that detail, but could you give us some idea of how those expenditures, how much will be raised and how those expenditures will be made?
Yes, this, these two-step increase would bring in nine point, roughly $9.9 million. The, I do have...
Is that total or per year?
Per year, sorry. So the way that the breakout occurs, and it's significant capital projects that we're talking about are automated distribution of about $6 million outage management of $15 million transportation equipment, general construction that we have to keep up with with new lines that we put in and replace, the advanced metering and the fiber system all totaled are in that number. And there's lots of different numbers in each year. The costs have increased on many of these items. Many of them will make us more efficient and make us run better, be able to provide better information, and provide the ability for people to save money on their utility bills. But that's a, that's a very brief, but that's an overview of some of them.
Well, and I think, I think the question that people are asking, they're simply looking for transparency.
Yes.
And they want to know that there is a plan in place for that $36 million. Now, the question was asked, but we're raising $50 million. The capital plan is for $36 million.
Yeah, so we're borrowing, we'll borrow money to do some of this. We periodically will go out and borrow money. And so we'll, over the course of this period of time, we'll have a couple of times when we borrow, and that's in our plan as well. So it's not, we're not raising the cash simply to pay for the projects that are at hand. We're borrowing money as well, and there's a balance. And that'll help us drive down the actual costs that we need on an annual basis.
Another question was, why has the city decided to push this through with very minimal advance notice and a little time for good, sound public discussion?
We brought this to our electric board in December. We took it to TVA over the course of the spring. It has to be approved by, our electric board has to be approved by TVA, who regulates the rates, and then it has to be approved by the city council. We issued public notice six times in the Huntsville Times. We had the public hearing. We had the council work session. We're answering questions tonight. We think that we have covered, we certainly have gotten a lot of questions, a lot of comments. It feels like the public is aware of this, and this is, we think, a fair way for us to proceed, to share the information the best that we can.
This next question is representative of a number of concerns I heard raised. My husband is retired military and hasn't had a raise in the eight years we've lived here. We cannot afford to pay another $30 to $60 in utility bills. And then I had someone else say, that's the cost every month of two school lunches for my kids, and a number of other people mentioned that they are on fixed incomes. Can you just once again, very briefly, go through, here's what you can do to pay an extra $2.50 a month, or eventually an extra $5?
Yes, ma'am. The $30 to $60 is an annual rate. 90% of our customers' bills are in the energy. You can change your thermostat. You can use more efficient light bulbs. And we want to try to work with agencies to help find ways to be sure that there's light bulbs available for people to use. We're trying to do that. We're working with our HEM program. We're working with our audit program. Three to four LED light bulbs replacing three to four 60-watt incandescent bulbs will offset that $30, which is one of the increases per year.
And my understanding is you're going to try and make those available.
We're trying to figure out how to do that, yes, ma'am.
This question also came up. I think it's time for the utility to decrease their consumption of our revenues by cutting expenses, decreasing number of employees, decreasing benefits for employees. What cuts and efficiencies has Huntsville Utilities put in place?
So, again, whenever we look at the metrics and compare how we are doing compared to our peers, we are in the bottom 10% as far as rates for electric providers in the TVA region. Our operation and maintenance cost is a third lower than other utilities. We watch our spending very closely. We have to balance the spending needs and the customer service needs, and we do that every single month, every single day. Our customers see that through lower bills. It sounds circular because we're talking about a rate increase, but even with this rate increase, we remain low. And we think that we take control of that by managing our cost well, and that is done through the support of our electric board and through the support of the city council who approves our purchases.
Two last questions. There are a number of emails I have received where people have done some math and say that this is a 55% increase, which seems rather steep. But when you're playing with small numbers, percentages pretty quickly escalate.
Yes.
It might be more accurate to look at what percentage of the overall bill, what, the increase of the overall bill, so...
Each of the two increases is 1.9% of the typical user. If you use a lot, it'll be a little bit less than that. If you use less, it'll be a little bit more than that. But the overall typical user will see $30 per month, and that runs per increase. That's 1.9%. The 55% is of the fixed costs, but that's not the total bill. That's only for customers that aren't using any electricity.
And my final question is, what is your Plan B?
What I actually said is that we do not have, when I said we do not have a Plan B, what I described was Plan B would be something that would not be palatable to people, that would actually reduce our customer service. We will, we would have to slow down some of the projects. We would not be able to respond as well as we do now. We would probably not have as good a customer service. We would not be able to get streetlights repaired as quickly as we do right now. And so, service levels would drop, and I don't think that's what we're called to do.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Thank you, Mr. Stowe. Councilman Kleen, Mr. Kleen?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
First of all, and I think I pretty much speak for everybody on the council, Huntsville Utilities is, does a very good job providing service to this community. As been pointed out, I think it's worth repeating, you are a not-for-profit entity, unlike Con Edison, Alabama Power, Duke Energy, and everything like that. You are owned by the citizens. The utility board members that we appoint, to my way of thinking, are some of the best citizens that I know of. They donate hundreds of hours of their time, and they don't receive any pay. I do have a couple, some concerns, and I think that's what we're here to talk about, because the city council basically is a policymaking body, just as we have to approve, and we did earlier tonight, some vehicles that you had that were over the price of $25,000. We are talking, I think, using your numbers, about smart meter program that would be in the ballpark of around $34 million. Concerns or questions I would have, the city council, as a body, has not made a policy decision that we want to go the smart meter route. Maybe that'll be what the council decides, but it seems like that we're basically making a commitment for money for smart meters, and the council hadn't exactly gone out and said, this is a $34 million commitment we want to make. And to me, why shouldn't the council go ahead and make a commitment upfront instead of approving this increase? And it seems like we're letting things kind of creep through, you know, without a commitment from the council.
Yes, sir. So, a couple of things. We have been talking about the metering project for several years. Some of our, the $34 million is the electric portion of this cost, and that has, includes some of the projects that have been approved by council, the meter data management system, the back office system, the things that we've been preparing for to get ready. Even several years ago, whenever we talked about the meter-reading contract, we talked about the reason that we were doing that is to move in this direction. So while there hasn't been a formal approval of the specific purchase requisition for this, there has been ongoing discussion, and so we've continued our planning process because it's a long-range project that takes several years. We have to build up the revenue. We have to get the dollars in place to do this. And so I think it's been, this has been something we've talked to homeowners associations about over the last year. We've been to as many homeowners associations as we could in the last year, and one of the topics that we cover each time we talk to them is about this, because it's of interest. More and more people are actually supporting this and wanting us to do this rather than the other way around. Six years ago, seven years ago, when we first started talking about this, this was a new technology, and we still refer to them as smart meters. But the reality is that it's the only option that's going to be there in the future, is they're just going to be meters in the future. And this is the technology and the way that the industry is working. And so we anticipate that as we bring more information forward as a good planning tool, that we ought to have this. And we wanted to show you what our plan was, and that's why it's listed in there. You also, other things that are in our plan that are not prepared to have specific approvals are distribution automation and outage management programs that are four and five and six years down the road. Those are projects that we need to plan for now, so we share them with you now, but the specific approvals will come later.
Okay. Well, again, I would be, I guess, more comfortable if the council was on record. I mean, I've heard, as I understand it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we may actually be in kind of an agreement on this, some of the questions and some of the concerns about radiation and stuff like that that existed four or five years ago, I guess as technology and new generations of meters have come along, that has kind of gone by the wayside. So, I can understand that there is a positive direction, but again, because of that amount of commitment, just like the water treatment plant, I would feel more comfortable if the council as a body, it could be a 5-0 vote, it could be a one versus four vote with me on the losing side, that it passed. But at least if it passed the council, then I can say, hey, I'm comfortable with, because we went through, it went through the right process, but...
So the water, the water plant's a great example. We approved rate increases before we approved the water treatment plant construction.
But y'all came to the council on that, on what the money was going to be used for.
In the same order that we're doing this. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Now, I want to make sure I understand. I know I asked you a few minutes ago, you said that fiber was not part of the increase, but then you said something, Dr. Robinson, I didn't quite catch about fiber cabling or something, as part of this rate increase. Maybe I'm talking about two different things?
No, I, so the, we're showing all of our capital projects that are in here. The fiber project is not specifically something that this is going to fund.
Okay. What about an idea that had been mentioned, and y'all had had in the past, you had a two-tiered rate system set up where that seemed to kind of give a little bit of a break to those at the low-income areas that we've been kind of talking about, but that's not part of what's being proposed now?
Yeah, we're actually collapsing that. That did not work like we thought it would. It didn't drive the customers. And the reason I think that is, is because we... And the reason I think that is is because we don't have the meters in place to tell people what they're using. So, we ended up, because we are sending bills out and people don't know what they've used until several months, several weeks after they've used the electricity, they have no control over that. As we move forward with the metering project and as we move forward with new technology, we may have opportunities to put in rates that would match the time and have different tiers if people wanted to. Those will be optional rates is the plan that we have right now, although it's not complete plan, and that would provide opportunities. But that's down the road after the meters are installed.
Okay. I'm going to ask you a question, and I'm not trying to be cute, but I feel like we're kind of getting into a cycle. Some of these programs you're talking about, the smart meters, other things that were talked about, the light bulbs, are you getting on that tangent where you're encouraging people to save electricity, and then you're going to come back down the road because of the energy savings that have taken place? Your cash flow's not what you expected it to be, and we're going to need another rate increase coming?
More of our rate increases in the future will be on the fixed side of the component like this one is. It's a similar process that we used on the water that was approved several years ago, similar to the gas. More of our costs are fixed, and as more of our costs are fixed, we need to have that match the revenue that we receive from customers. And so the rate structure that would occur in the future, I would expect to have more in the fixed charge than in the variable charge.
Okay. Right now, and just so you can understand what we're looking at here on the council and having to deal with, it would have been helpful if this had been spread out over a longer period of time for public discussion and public understanding. We've had some issues in the past that were a little bit of a hot potato. The one cent sales taxing increase, that was earmarked for roads, that took place over multiple meetings so that the public would have discussion, they would understand it. And when it finally did pass, there seemed to be more acceptance because they understood it and they felt like we'd been spreading out over a long period of time. In addition to that, the current level that we have for just the basic charge for, let's say, electricity and water is approximately two hundred and thirty-six dollars a year for a residential customer. That's before the first drop of water, the first electricity bolt has come out. And now raising that up an additional fifty-eight dollars, again, I think I kind of feel like we're getting to a point where we're having too much fixed cost, and I would be more comfortable if we had it on a usage basis where those who live in like a ten thousand square foot house are going to use more electricity and they would pay more of it, and those who live in a one thousand square foot house and probably are lower income would pay less. I mean, wouldn't that be a more equitable solution for concerns that we've heard from members of the public from, I guess, different districts of the city?
Ninety percent of the electric rate is still in that variable cost for a typical customer, so they still have the control over that. And nearly all of our cost is fixed on the Huntsville Utilities side. So I think that we're actually implementing something that continues to be fair, that continues to be something that will allow us to recover our costs in a fair, equitable manner in a small incremental increase, and it continues to have the largest majority of the cost on the electric side is driven by the, in the usage, ninety percent still in the usage.
Okay. We're looking at, using your numbers, about thirty-four million dollars for implementing the smart meter program. Chattanooga got their meters, you know, at no charge because of a grant. Why can't we get the same treatment from TVA that Chattanooga got?
They didn't get that from TVA, first of all. Second of all, they spent several hundred million dollars to install their fiber and to manage their fiber system, and we will spend a quarter of that to be able to get our fiber as deep as they do have in their system and provide a higher level of service to our customers for a lower cost. The grant that you're referring to was from the two thousand seven or two thousand eight crisis that occurred, and so they got that there. We applied for that because we try to get grants every chance we can, including the eleven and a half million dollars that we have for the Extreme Energy Makeover project. And so we will continue to look for grants where we can, especially grants like the Extreme Energy Makeover project that helps our customers.
Okay. I guess, let me just say more, I'm thinking, because of the fifty-five percent increase and the amount that that would, the way that would impact people, fixed income elderly, that is not something I would support. If this did not work, or as an alternative, I would support a uniform 1.9 percent across the board increase for residential, small business, heavy industrial, commercial, all classifications. Actually, that would probably give you a little bit more money because you're including all those classifications. But to me, I think that would be a fair way, would give the person who wants to a chance to kind of cut back on their bill, the person who has the low-income issues that, you know, we've been hearing about, it would give them less of an impact. They would be paying less, whereas the person with the bigger house using more would pay more. So, I would just throw that out. I wish y'all had come back, wish y'all had come with that. I think that would have been a more fair thing for all the people in the community, including the industries. I think you put in one pot, everybody would be the same, but with this, I just think it's just too much for those who are at the bottom of the income range.
I think the fifty-five percent is a number that's not a correct number to use. That's not what the increase is going to be. The typical residential customer would see a 1.9 percent increase, which matches what you described. It is not, the cost structure does not match, and I think that we would actually see less dollars total revenue that would come in off of that. And then we would have to have ultimately higher rates, higher costs for all our customers, and wouldn't be able to provide the level of service that we have. This is something that the Electric Board has studied, has reviewed, has recommended based on the directions that we all get from the City Council, and I would hope that you would be able to support this.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong on the math, but eight eighty-eight is what the current access fee is, and over the two increases, it would go up an additional four dollars and ninety cents. And if that's not fifty-five percent, it's somewhere in the ballpark.
So, in October of two thousand and ten, typical electric customer was a hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. In October of two thousand and sixteen, after both increases, it will be two dollars and ninety cents. Yes, the math is correct on the fixed portion, but that's not the total bill that customers pay. So I think it causes people to think it's a much more significant increase than it really is. It's two dollars and fifty cents a month, small, incremental, thoughtful, reasonable, and still in the lowest ten percent of the TVA distributors, still less than what other customers are paying.
Okay. Well, again, the 1.9 percent I came up with was based upon what you were talking about, the amount on the bill. And in fairness on the discussion that we're having, yes, you guys are at the very, not at the very bottom, but you are, y'all, at the very least, you are at the lower half of the TVA.
The lower ten percent.
Okay. Well, I'll give you that after the increase?
Yes, sir. Well, after the increase, it might be the lower fifteen percent, but the other places will have increases too, so we'll remain near the bottom.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Kline. Mr. Stowe, first of all, I would like to say that what you and your administration and your board are doing is impeccable. I know that the general public, when they hit a light switch, they want power. When they turn the water on, they want water. And that may not sound like much, but if you've been in other countries, if I could digress for a minute, my then-wife, who was Bahamian, in the Bahamas, the water table would be low, and you could only take showers during certain times of the day. Now, if you were on Cable Beach visiting or Paradise Island, you didn't experience that, but in the common area where everyday people live, you had to time your shower. So, what you all are doing is very important. And I said all of that to say that while I support what you're doing, I am elected to represent the constituents, and I've gotten calls, communications from people from most of you all's districts as well, who have, some folk who say they just don't want to pay it, and other people who are severely impacted by it. I know that Huntsville Utilities and the City Council, we, for lack of a better description, are in a marriage. We have to work together. And having said that, I would like to make a motion to amend item eight E to reflect one dollar and twenty-five cents, which is half of the two dollars and fifty cents. So, council members, that is my motion. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers, discussion?
Mr. Culver, where did you come up with these figures? And I'm not sure I follow exactly what you're trying to do.
Okay. Looking at agenda item number eight E and its pertinent parts, the fixed rate on the utilities is being proposed at two dollars and fifty cents. What I'm proposing is to amend that to reflect an increase of one dollar and twenty-five cents.
What's your reasoning?
And my reason for that is while we do that, it would generate 2.45 million of the 4.9 million, which is a good compromise between people who have difficulties paying, plus simultaneously trying to help Huntsville Utilities to move forward with this plan. My proposal will be the same for eight F when we get to that as well.
This, if I can say, it doesn't actually, it's not compromise because we don't bring you suggestions that we want to be cut in half. We bring you true numbers that are real in order for us to remain progressive city and in order for us to remain with the strong bond rating that we have, and in order for us to accomplish the tasks that are listed, we need to have the revenue that offsets that. This is not a, half of the rate doesn't accomplish the goals that we've set out, it doesn't accomplish the direction that we're headed, it doesn't accomplish. This is, again, the electric rate, the Electric Board has spent hours reviewing this. The Electric Board, that you have asked to spend the hours looking at this, has come and making a change without any thought behind it for us to analyze what the impact is, does not work well, doesn't help us with our bond rating, it doesn't help our citizens, it doesn't help our customers. So I do encourage you to stick with the proposal that we've presented for you. Even though it is two dollars and fifty cents, it is a smaller incremental increase than what we've had in the past, and splitting it is not going to accomplish the task that we've laid out, doesn't accomplish our goals.
I certainly agree with you that it is only half of what you're requesting. However, I believe this amount will be closer to furthering your goal, and it's not to say the gentleman that recommended the plan C, it is not to say that we couldn't do that over two years instead of one year. But what I'm looking at for the most part right now with this plan, I feel that with this, we are reaching at least some kind of amicable agreement between what you all are asking for and what some of the residents in our community can afford to pay. And with that, I do want to move forward with my motion. Council members, I'm asking for your support on that. Any further discussion on my motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll vote against it. I think if we're going to do this, let's do it right. If you've got a majority vote that doesn't want to increase it, just stand up and say that. But if we're going to vote for it, let's do it right. Let's not, you know, just fool around with this.
Agreed.
Okay.
Well, Mr. President, I do think that we ought to consider the wishes of the constituents of this whole city. A lesser amount is better than an amount that they cannot afford. Council President has indicated a one-half amount carried over. And of course, I'm looking at doing what we need to do to keep service, but yet I want an amount that is affordable. The citizens have said no to the two fifty, and we're looking at one twenty-five. That is at least half of the amount they could much better afford, the one-half amount than they could the two dollars and fifty cents. Whether we know it or not, everybody cannot afford two fifty. I mean, we talk about some citizens that can afford it, and you're okay with it, but there are some citizens in this city who cannot afford it, and I'm supporting them.
But you've just heard.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. He has the floor.
I was elected to be the voice of the folk who live in District One. They have called me and said no. And so, at least one twenty-five. Don't tell me that they can't make it on that.
No. So, if we do this, it's going to reduce the...
I'm sorry. Mr. Stowe, Dr. Showers has the floor. Dr. Showers? Thank you, Mr. Stowe, and then we'll come back to you, Dr. Robinson.
I would continue to encourage you to understand that we have studied this and we bring to you a reasonable increase. If we do something different than this, it will impact the future rates. It may drive up costs long-term. It will decrease our customer service. It will decrease our ability to do the job that we do every day that you all have said we do well. It is something that causes, potentially causes, the bond ratings to be hurt. It's not positive for the community. And we have a hundred and ninety thousand customers that we serve every day across the entire county. And in order for us to keep on doing the service, to keep on providing the services that we need, we've provided you a reasonable plan. It's a thoughtful plan. It's not something that we come up with without thinking about it, and we'd encourage you to stay on track with what is a small increase because if we don't do this, if you come back with something that's different than that, it will cause costs to go up in the future. Whenever we come back, we'll have to ask for larger increases to cover the costs that are going to exist. Costs are going up. The bucket truck was twenty-two percent more, the trucks were twenty-two percent more. This is lower than one percent per year for the last five years. This is reasonable. It is something that you need to approve because we are doing the job. Your Electric Board has reviewed this already, and I would ask you to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Stowe, Dr. Robinson.
First of all, Mr...
I'm sorry, ma'am. Dr. Robinson has the floor.
Mr. Stowe...
Dr. Robinson has the floor, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Stowe has put, has presented to us a number of options that low-income families have to be able to manage their utility use so that they can save not only the cost of this increase, but perhaps even more. And in addition to that, the increase would help pay for infrastructure that would help those, our constituents, lower their utility usage even further. I think it's our responsibility to do what we need to do for our constituents to make it possible for them to lower their utility usage, and that's what this is about. It would be very short-sighted of us to look at this just in the immediate. We have a long-range plan in place here. And, Mr. Culver, I would suggest to you that you in particular should have a concern about this because much of that infrastructure is going to go into West Huntsville. West Huntsville is growing, and that infrastructure needs to go out there. And by voting this down, you're voting against your constituents. I would be voting against the long-term needs of my constituents. Every one of us needs to have that long-range perspective.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson, and I certainly share your view. And while I am not voting against my constituents, I think that in any relationship, there has to be some compromise. I wish that I could get everything that I asked for, but I don't. But when I hear families and I hear people, on Sunday, I'm speaking at a church in southwest Huntsville, Councilman Kline, in your district, Calvary Church of the Nazarene, and I have gotten concerns, communications from them, people from all over Huntsville. So, I think a compromise can be good. We certainly appreciate what you guys are doing, and I'm not going to vote it down, but I do want to move forward with my motion to amend.
Can I understand, can I ask a question to understand exactly what the...
Yes, sir. You may, sir.
Did I understand you to say that your recommendation will be to implement half of this in May and half of each of these so that it'd be a half of the total that we're asking?
Yes, sir. It would be approximately...
So, would we accomplish the same compromise if you adopted the May and tabled the October? And then that would give us time to come back to you. It would give the public another six months to understand. It would give plenty of time for us to have a more thoughtful explanation because I don't know what the impact is. I know you say it's just half, but I don't know what the impact is to our budgets, to our projects, to the bonds, to the rates, to the customer service, to the level. But if we have a vote for May, as it's presented tonight and a table of the motion for the second part, that gives us a lot more time to come back, and it actually accomplishes the exact same thing that you're talking about. It brings in half of the amount we're asking for.
Well, it's actually five cents more, but I'm certainly amenable to that.
Thank you.
Mr. Stowe, I do want to say this. Everything is about compromise, and we are elected to represent our constituents. We are also tasked with the overall betterment of this community. And with a five cents difference, I'm, I'm willing to, to work with that. And with that being said, council members, if we vote to approve this for May, I am not voting to approve item F. Now, what that says, and, and, and just indulge me, is five cents more than what I'm asking for, but the bottom line is, it amounts to basically the same thing.
That, that allows us to table item F and come back to you with more information to answer the questions again in more, in more detail over the next six months.
Well, it's not just with more detail, but what I am going to be looking for is a different plan altogether.
Yes, no, I understand. We'll, we'll come back with, with, if we table this, if, in order for us to move forward with our projects, if we have the May as presented, and we will, we will figure out what the right answers are for you in the future.
Thank you, sir. With that being said, council members, thank you. Mr. Clean.
Just, just a general comment, and this is just talking, and Mr. Riley, jump in, you're the legal mind, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, this type of issue, ordinances, resolutions that the council passes, we are a legislative body, we are a policymaking body, and whether I agree or disagree with whatever gets passed, whether it's on this issue or anything else, if it passes the council, that's the fiduciary responsibility of the city council to do these types of things, to make these decisions. Am I talking about correctly about the legal responsibilities that city councils have on, on this or any other type of issue that we deal with?
Well, certainly, you're talking correctly in that fashion. It's up to the Huntsville Utilities to bring their request for a rate increase before this body for approval or denial. So that would be your responsibility to rule upon that motion, and that resolution is before you today. At this point, there's a little bit of confusion in the procedure, because we have the original resolution, and then we also have a, a motion to amend that resolution on the table, and there's been no, no vote on either of those.
Yes, Mr. Senator Riley. I'm- I'm sorry, I'm just continuing with the discussion, but I will move to withdraw my motion to amend this motion to get the original item back on the floor as it is.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Clean.
I would like to offer a substitute A. I'll pass out copies, I'll read it, I move-
Mr. Chairman, point of order, you've got this screwed up, you need to, you have an amendment on the floor, correct?
He withdrew it.
Withdrew the amendment?
He moved, he made a motion to do something? That's not proper. Did you withdraw your motion?
I'm withdrawing my motion to amend it. It is gone.
It's gone, so we're on the main motion.
We're back to the main motion, which means if Councilman Clean wants to do another amendment or to substitute, he certainly can.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, subs-, okay, I move that instead of the proposed 55% increase in monthly electric availability fees for residential and small business classifications, a 1.9% rate increase based upon consumption be enacted for all classifications of utility customers, including residential, commercial, small business, and heavy industrial.
Motion has been made, is there a second? I'm going to second it for the purpose of discussion, Councilman Clean. What I do want to say about that, what I do want to say about that is that it will undo what I've already proposed, it would also create that, not only the 2.5%, $2.50 now, but it'll also create the $2.40 in October, and that is what I'm trying to avoid.
Okay. Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's why I wanted to stay in reference to the 55, or maybe 54 point something, but in reference, that's why I said, instead of the proposed 55% increase in monthly availability fees, that was part of the motion I made. So, what I'm proposing would be a uniform 1.9% based on consumption, and that would be for all classifications of electrical customers, which conceivably could actually give them a little bit more than what they had asked for.
Any further discussion on the motion, Dr. Robinson?
I have a question for Mr. Riley. Mr. Stowe told us that he went through a process since December to get a rate increase approved. He had to go through his board, he had to go through TBA, he had to go through a series of required public hearings. Can this council approve a rate increase without going, with a new rate increase, a new proposed rate increase, without going through that process?
That is a question that I do not have the answer to. I am concerned, though, especially about the last motion, which constitutes a complete change in the structure of the rate increase that's been brought forward. And there would need to be some investigation into the process of obtaining approvals, which, as Mr. Stowe has stated, he has to go through several procedural hoops before he even gets to this body. So that is something that would need to be looked at.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Councilman Clean.
Mr. Riley, I would ask or contend that the utility board, even with their legislative authority that they have, they're an advisory board, they go through their process, and they make a recommendation to the city council, and that would be similar to what the planning commission does or other boards. And when the planning commission makes a recommendation to the city council, the council can accept it, it can reject it, and we can modify it. And I think this would be on a parallel with that.
Thank you, Councilman Clean. Mr. Stowe, I know that you're not a-
So, it is, it's a little bit different because of the contract that we have with TBA that requires us to go through a cost of service analysis, and that's what we've done, we've gone through the process, and we have looked at where the costs come from, where the costs are occurred, and then we've put the most favorable presentation forward. It is not a 1.9% across the board is, this is way more complicated than that, because there's a lot of pieces within each one of these customer classes, and that's why, again, I would go back to recommend the, approving the May and holding off on the other one, which is closer to, I think, the intent of Mr. Culver's recommendation. And it would allow us to do analysis, and we can come back to you with the recommendation that looks more like what you've described, but it, it takes a lot more work than just a few minutes of, of here. It also requires TBA regulatory approval, because they have oversight of our, of our rates as well.
Thank you, Mr. Stowe. Yes, sir, Dr. Showers. I'm sorry, Councilman Clean, are you finished, sir?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Showers.
Since these questions have arisen, and there, those who don't have the answer tonight about so many questions that we have asked as it relates to this, I'm going to make a motion to postpone this until our attorney, who just announced that he was not sure about where we are and where we ought to be going. So I move to postpone this action tonight.
And, and Dr. Showers, we have a motion on the floor, and we have an amendment to that motion. Can we go ahead and vote on the amendment, either vote it up or down, and you can certainly come back with your motions.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order, it's perfectly appropriate for Dr. Showers to move to postpone this item at this time?
Okay. Then we have to vote on the most current motion first, which is a motion to postpone.
If he, if he gets a second.
I will second that motion.
And then I think you need to say postpone till win, or if it's indefinitely.
And with a definite time, Dr. Showers, or do you want to, it requires a definite time?
Well, I'm, I'm counting on the attorney to help us with this particular situation where we are, and what we should or should not be able to do. So I would move until the, give him enough time between now and the next council meeting.
Mr. Riley, do you have a time recommendation for the motion made to postpone until a time certain, sir?
Mr. President, may I ask a question before that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stowe.
I don't, I don't know what the request is now.
Okay, let me see if I can explain it. Here's where we are. We, here's where we are. We have a motion to approve this item, we have a motion to amend it to reflect Councilman Clean's motion to do the 1.9%.
Which I, which I think I answered is not something that can be done, because the TBA, the TBA hasn't approved that, it would have to go through another series. That's the answer that I think that-
Yes, sir. I got that, Mr. Stowe, but I'm trying to bring you to where we are now.
Yep.
Dr. Showers has a motion to postpone, which will take precedence over Mr. Clean's motion.
In order to answer the question I just answered.
Is the, could I, is the motion to postpone, a motion to postpone the, Mr. Clean's amendment or the main motion?
It will postpone the main motion, which would include Councilman Clean's amendment. It would postpone us where we are. I would prefer if we could go ahead and vote, I'm getting a signal here that we need to take a recess for the purpose of the stenographer. Chair moves for recess for about 10 minutes, we'll come back at 8:32. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made properly second, we'll resume at 8:32. Huntsville City Council meeting is now back in session. We will continue with the discussion on the motion to postpone has been properly made in second. Is there any further discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm not sure the motion was postponed was properly made. What is the time it's postponed to? Or is it postponed indefinitely?
Mr. Riley, it needs a definite time, please, sir.
Well, you, now, I'm not the one making the motion, so I can provide you with a time that certainly within two weeks, we could provide answers to the legal questions that have arisen, but the motion as far as the length of time required has to be made by the councilman that is making that motion.
And back to Dr. Showers, sir.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Could, could I ask a question again for clarification? What is the answer, what is the answer we need to have in that, that we hope to have in two weeks?
Okay. As I understand, the answer is whether or not this council has the ability or the legal, the legal right to amend the resolution that is before. I, I have, have serious concerns about the legality of that possibility. As I understand the process, the council has a contract, which they have approved with the TBA, and that contract states that there is a certain procedure for rate increases, and before a rate increase can occur, it has to be approved by TBA. The particular resolution that is before the council tonight has been presented through those various procedural steps, and it arrives here having received the approval of the TBA and the different bodies that are involved in that process. If we were in a situation, however, where we were trying to amend that, or the council was trying to amend that, then it would not, by definition, have gone through all those procedural steps. So I have a strong concern as to whether that would be legal or enforceable, or that the, the utilities might even be able to utilize such a rate increase or implement it.
Then it sounds like we have our answer.
I'm sorry, Dr. Robinson?
It sounds like we have our answer, then. And why are we waiting for two weeks? The answer is, it has to be approved by TBA, so this council can't put, impose a, a utility increase on the public without TBA approval.
Yes, ma'am.
But this council is not-
Dr. Showers.
This council is not proposing to put anything on anyone. My earlier statement, Dr. Robinson, was to allow citizens, which we have a community that all are not able to pay increases, but they can pay a lesser amount. And that didn't go anywhere, so I wanted, based on what the attorney had said, that he would go ahead and investigate whether or not we could in fact do that. Is that what you said?
That's what I said, and I have done some informal investigation in the process of, you know, the break as we sat here and listened, and acquainted myself a little bit more with the procedure. Now, if you want me to recite, you know, line and verse in the contract and such as that, that will take additional time, but I am reasonably satisfied that in order to, to amend this, that we would be placing the utilities in an untenable position, that they would not be able to implement such a rate increase. There is a procedure outlined in the contract between, that has been approved by the Huntsville City Council, with the city of Huntsville, and with TBA and the Huntsville Utilities involved, that implements how that rate increase is, is considered. And when we change that, then we have not, that, that particular rate increase has not been, has not gone through all those procedural steps.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. So, council members, where we are, since there is some ambiguity as it relates to whether or not the city council as a body has the authority to amend a, an agreement as it relates to a utility rate increase, we're back now to the motion to postpone for further clarification with specificity. Having said that, any further discussion?
Just to clarify again, so, we have the motion here to postpone, and if I understand what, what Dr. Showers said, he wanted to postpone because he wanted to make sure that we had a proposal that would permit citizens to pay only half the increase. And yet, if we approve the May, only the May, and postpone October, it would satisfy that requirement, and we could take care of this tonight, rather than leave everyone, including Huntsville Utilities, hanging. They've got to go to the bond market, so they need a decision from us tonight of some kind, and by approving May, postponing or delaying the vote on October, we would be able to satisfy that requirement and also satisfy the requirement of only imposing half of the, the rate increase.
And being in compliance with the TBA contract.
And being in compliance with TBA.
And with that, it would only be a five cents difference in what is being proposed.
Thank you, yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Clean.
Uh, I'm, based upon what the attorney said, and whether I like it or not, you're the attorney, and you know more about the legality than I do, but I guess based upon what the attorney has advised or told us, I guess my proper course of action at this point would be to withdraw.
There you go.
Based upon what the attorney has told us, I'm assuming that my proper course of action would be to withdraw my motion. Is that what you're trying to tell me, Mr. Riley?
Of course, obviously, I, I can't tell you what to do with-
No, by me, as far as legality, you're saying my motion was out of order or was illegal, is that?
Well, I, your motion was not illegal, the enforceability of that motion might be difficult. Your, your motion was perfectly legal, but the impact of that motion, if it were to pass, would be something that would put in severe doubt whether that increase could be implemented, you know, there would be all manner of questions about the enforceability of that, so that would be my opinion.
So, Councilman Clean, are you officially withdrawing your motion, sir?
I guess no good deed goes unpunished. Yes, Mr. President, I'll withdraw my motion.
So, council members, where we are, we have a motion on the floor for the original item.
Whoa, 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 we had a motion to postpone, somewhere in there, has it been withdrawn?
That's what I'm getting to, Mr. Russell. So, now we have a motion to postpone, so we are dealing with basically two things, the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a standard form re, sales rate schedule substitution agreement with TBA, providing for an electric rate change for Huntsville Utilities, residential, and small, commercial customers, and we have now a motion on the floor that has been made in properly second for postponement. So any discussion that we have now is in reference to the motion for postponement with the date definite of April 28th.
The, the motion to postpone was made with regard to concerns about Mr. Clean's proposed amendment, which he has now withdrawn. So is that motion to post- So is that motion to postpone still relevant?
We will go with the issuer of that motion. Dr. Showers for clarification, sir. Could you state the purpose of your motion?
Mr. President, the reason that I move to postpone is that when I first heard it, attorney indicated that he was not sure, uh, about the motion that was out there. That motion I made was to give us time to be sure. And, uh, he indicated that during the break, he had some chance to look at some document, uh, and I still don't know. But again, my motion is still to postpone. You can vote it up, you can vote it down.
And that motion has been properly made in second. Any further discussion on the motion to postpone?
Mr. Chairman, who was the second?
The chair seconded the motion to postpone. The motion made by Dr. Showers, seconded by the chair. Any further discussion?
You know, if you would give me a point of order, in order to clarify that motion, we do need to make sure that if there is a time involved, that it is clear that that is the motion.
The motion has been made to postpone until a time definite at our next regular scheduled council meeting, April the twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen. The motion has been made in properly second. Any further discussion on that motion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I'm sorry, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Russell, how do you vote, sir?
I vote against.
Dr. Robinson?
No.
Mr. Kling?
No.
Dr. Showers?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The motion fails for lack of approval. So council members, we're now back to the original motion. The original item on the agenda, uh, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a standard form resale rate schedule substitution agreement with TVA, providing for an electric rate change for Huntsville Utilities, residential and small commercial customers. The motion has been made in properly second. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose? I'm sorry, let me do this roll call. Mr. Russell, how do you vote, sir?
I vote aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Kling?
No.
Dr. Showers?
What are we voting on, Mr. President?
We're voting on the passing of Agenda Item Eight E, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a standard form resale rate schedule substitution agreement with TVA, providing for an electric rate chart change for Huntsville Utility Residential and Small Commercial Customers.
My vote is no.
The chair votes no. It fails. Agenda Item F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a standard form resale schedule substitution agreement with TVA to be provided before October two thousand and sixteen, providing for an electric rate change for Huntsville Utilities, residential and small commercial customers. Mr. Stowe, is there a motion? Motion by the chair, is there a second?
I'll second it. Normally, if you make a motion, you're in for it, but I guess that's not the way the council operates?
It doesn't have to, it doesn't have to work that way.
No, sir, it doesn't. It's just a, just a common parliamentary procedure.
For the purpose of discussion, Mr. Stowe.
This is the second part of the rate increase, um, uh, would go into effect in October. Uh, it's a two dollar and forty cent rate increase.
Any further discussion?
So a rate increase on a rate change that doesn't exist.
Doesn't exist, exactly.
It doesn't exist.
So, so my question to Mr. Stowe is, since we have now voted down the May, in, the May rate increase, is there any reason, does, does this, does this even make any sense?
Oh, no, it does not make sense, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Oppose?
Mr. Chairman, I, I just think it's best maybe if you withdraw it because it doesn't make any sense.
This, this is...
It could be handled either way, and with that being said, uh, Mr. Stowe, if you prefer, we will withdraw that item from the agenda. Thank you, thank you so kindly. Council members, we're now at Agenda Item Number Nine, Board Appointments. Nine A, Board Appointments to be voted on. There aren't any appointments to be voted on. We are now at Agenda Item Nine B, Board Appointment Nominations. Are there any nominations?
Chairman, I, I request you get order in the, in the chambers.
Thank you, sir. Any Board Appointment Nominations to be made? Hearing none, without approval of expenditures. Today is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Dr. Showers?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I move that we expand fifteen million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars, twenty-nine cents.
Second? Motion has been made for approval of expenditures for fifteen million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. Motion by Dr. Showers, seconded by Councilman Kling. Discussion, ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Mr. President, I do for the record...
Yes, sir.
Uh, want to say that's, uh, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Correction. Fifteen million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ready for the vote? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Dr. Showers, is there a finance committee?
Yes, uh, that's our finance director. If she would come and share with us.
Good evening. This evening I have Peggy Sargent, Finance Director. I have the monthly sales revenue report for March. We were up month over month from two thousand and fourteen, ten point eight percent, and year over year, five point four percent. But I do want to add a clarification on that, that in two thousand and fourteen, we had a negative revenue month in March, and so those are slightly misleading numbers. And if you normalized it out, we are actually about right where we were the month before, which is about four point four year to date, if you take in a normalization on that. I also have our licenses year to date so far for two thousand and sixteen, and we are down about twenty-five hundred eighty licenses compared to two thousand and fifteen. In clerk treasurer, we are down about seventeen hundred and sixty business licenses, and in inspection, we're down approximately eight hundred and twenty compared to prior year.
Any discussion, council members? Dr. Showers?
Mr. President, I just want to thank our director. We had asked for that information sometime back, and I was just concerned about where we were with those three items, and, uh, thank you for the report.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. Thank you, Ms. Sargent. We're now at Agenda Item Number Eleven, Communications from the Mayor. Mayor Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, we just, um, we have many, many events happening at springtime here, and we're, we are very fortunate to be in the city that we're in. Right now, we're seeing a lot of expansion. Uh, your sales report, sales tax report reflects that. Uh, we're seeing many, many businesses expand. We're seeing expansion on, um, uh, jobs because we're having additional people come in because of some of the work that has been done in the past, um, with, with quite a few different groups. Um, we are working very hard to make sure that we can keep up with our infrastructure, and our infrastructure is very important to us, just as important to us as our infrastructure is, uh, the utilities' infrastructure. I would hope that council looks at this and, and looks at it seriously because this, this can, uh, limit our ability to expand. This can limit our, uh, limit on their capital expenditures, can limit us in, in, in the future, uh, and limit the ability for us to actually have a redundant and a very reliable electric system. If we don't have a reliable electric system, people will not look at coming to this city. Uh, they will not look at coming here. They will not look at being part of this, this area if we don't have a reliable, uh, electric system and we don't have the ability to make sure that we can keep the power on, that we don't have, uh, some of the things that we've seen in other, other places, which are brownouts and other things like that. That's one of the jobs that we have is it's city government. We have to make sure that we provide an infrastructure that, that provides for our citizens to have what is necessary. One of the things that's necessary is infrastructure. Part of that infrastructure is electricity. Uh, so I would hope that we look at this and we, we have a conversation with this and possibly even a work session on this so that we can have some time to come back, uh, come back and find, find the place where we need to be, um, in, in this specific matter. Uh, something that I think we each need to educate ourselves on because we need to educate ourselves on the importance of having a system that, um, that matters. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Battle.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Uh, Dr. Showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, today that was a Kiwanis Club Safety Patrol Boys and Girls Club banquet. That was from five to seven. And of course, uh, tomorrow, uh, Laine Garner will celebrate his eightieth birthday celebration at the Jackson Center. I will be out of town next week, eighteenth through the twentieth. I'll be in Selma, Alabama at the university. I will be the speaker for the Prefounders Day, uh, program. At Lee High School on the twenty-first, on a Thursday night, next Thursday, the Big Fish Musical. I will be at Lee High School. All of us know that's on Meridian Street. That's nine AM next Thursday, uh, at Lee High School. One team, one hill, A and M Athletics. The Department of Alabama A and M University's Athletic will host the SWAC outdoor track and field championship, May sixth through May the eighth, at the Lewis Cruz Stadium. This is the second year that A and M has hosted the championship. The SWAC schools will all be here in Huntsville that week, uh, to participate in the track and field championship. The schools are Alabama A and M University, Alabama State, Alcorn State, Grambling State, Jackson State, Mississippi Valley State, Parerview A and M University, Southern University, Texas Southern University, and the University of Arkansas Pine Bluff. Would also like, in my final, uh, report, is TACCoR. Uh, that's top of Alabama Regional Council of Government. The agency will be having its Madison County Commission, uh, through TACCoR, invite all citizens to attend the annual senior fun fest, previously called the Older American Festival, to be held on May the tenth, and the range date is May twelfth at Sharon Johnson Park. This event is a full day of activities and music to honor older people in the five county region served by TACCoR. We are anticipating over twenty-five hundred people to come. That festival will start at ten o'clock and will last until one o'clock. Thank you, Mr. President.
Dr. Showers, Mr. Russell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. As Mayor mentioned and Dr. Showers mentioned, there's been a lot going on the last couple of weeks. Uh, I want to mention that there was a great robot competition over at the VBC. I'd never been to one, and I was surprised at how many visitors we had to our community to watch it. I was surprised at how engaged the, uh, students were in the competition. It was really a great event, and they had some outstanding ambassadors that really showed us around and did a great job of explaining, uh, the competition. I was pleased to attend Little League Opening Day. We had great crowds at Eastern, International American. Uh, those are the parks that the children in my district play at. It's very important to, uh, the families I represent that we have those parks, and they're great, and we're almost at capacity, probably even, uh, a little bit over. Uh, the city departments do a great job, uh, with those fields, and I want to thank all of them. They know who they are. I want to congratulate, uh, the, this council for a meeting and a special session to help with local business with Spring Fest. It's nice to know that we still live in a smaller town where, uh, we will change our busy schedules to, uh, help the local business out, so I appreciate that. Uh, the Fellowship of Christian Athletes had a great dinner with, uh, former Air Force Coach Fisher DeBarry. Uh, he taught us a lot, and we lost one of our great members of the community the last couple of weeks, uh, Mr. George Smith, that was the president and chairman of AC Inc. He runs a great company, employs a lot of people, and, uh, we're really going to miss him. Uh, one more thing, uh, the Rotary Strive Program at Lee is going well. We had about thirty students participating, and they came to our Rotary Program on Tuesday, and we had a great time celebrating with them all their accomplishments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Russell. Dr. Robinson?
Um, I want to echo what, uh, Mr. Russell said about Opening Day. It really is a fun event, and it was really fun to be part of that. Um, in preparation for that, I met with the McGuckin Board. I'm also going to be meeting with the Bell Mountain Board, uh, this, in a couple of weeks to talk about concerns at the parks. I think all of us saw, um, the great work that those boards are doing at the parks, and there's a good partnership with the city, and, and, uh, those parks are such a vital part of our community, and we really saw that on Opening Day. Also want to notify the, the community that traffic cameras have now been put up on the South Parkway. You can see the traffic north and south. It's a great partnership between WHNT, the South Huntsville Business Association, and the city. If you go on the WHNT website, on the Jack's Camera Network, you'll be able to monitor the work that's going on, the very impressive work that's going on on the South Parkway, as well as monitor traffic conditions. One of the things you can watch on those cameras, as well as when you're driving by, is that girders are going to be placed, uh, this weekend and Monday, um, at Martin Road to begin the work on the Martin Road Bridge. That's going to actually be a pretty impressive sight to see. Unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town, so I won't see it, but I'll hope to monitor it through that camera network. Uh, and also, as we're talking about construction on the South Parkway, I would let everyone know that this week is National Work Zone Awareness Week. Uh, the theme is "Don't Be That Driver." And certainly, as we, this, just yesterday, saw a tragic accident on I sixty-five as workers in a construction zone were killed. Um, it's a sad thing for that family. It's a sad thing for the community, and it's something that hopefully all of us will be aware of as we're traveling through the construction zones with all those orange cones. Please be careful. I'm hosting another, uh, South Huntsville Cleanup Day on April thirtieth from nine o'clock to twelve PM. Neighborhood captains can contact my office to sign up and organize in their neighborhoods. We're going to have a pickup for those neighborhood captains on April twenty-fifth at six o'clock at the Bailey Cove Library. That will immediately precede my town hall meeting. The town focus of that town hall will be on the relocation of Grissom High School, the plans for the new Grissom High School, and, um, the plans for the, the, the original Grissom site on Bailey Cove and, and what will be happening there. Finally, I would like to echo the mayor's concerns with regard to the action this council took tonight. It puts our public infrastructure in jeopardy. I think it was incredibly irresponsible. I would suggest in some cases, it might have even been self-serving. And I think that this council has an urgency now to hold a work session to talk about what are the other options. And I hope that we will continue to work with Huntsville Utilities to move forward, to do what we need to do to ensure that our public has the electric infrastructure that's required. We are close to celebrating the anniversary of the April twenty-seventh tornadoes, and it would only take one good storm to create a tremendous crisis for this community, and we need to be sure that we have the infrastructure in place to handle that. So I would respectfully ask, Mr. President, that you schedule a work session as soon as is practically possible to be able to meet with Huntsville Utilities to discuss plans moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson, and I certainly will do that at you all's discretion. Thank you. Mr. Kling?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first of all, I think the record should reflect the loss of Mr. Keith Sean Rock, Jr., who was a great leader in the community, who had donated much time, energy and resources to further the ice skating, uh, community. And, uh, his, uh, his loss would be greatly missed. And he was a friend, a gentleman I enjoyed, and, uh, I kind of wonder what might have happened with the, um, jail complex had Mr. Sean Rock served on the, uh, building authority, given how conscientious he was about the, uh, building of the Iceplex, uh, over at, uh, John Hunt Park. The, um, past couple of weeks, we've had Little League opening, and, uh, the Recreation Department's certainly done a great job. Brand Springs Park, uh, Mayfair Park, were just in phenomenally great, uh, condition, and, uh, the kids were having a great time out there, and I really enjoyed getting out to the events. Event going on this week is, um, on the, um... Uh, event going on this week is, um, on the, um, on Saturday, the New Hope Outreach Center is having a community celebration. It's gonna be going on Saturday from one to three at the West Side Center Community Park, and that's across from the gym and that Butler Terrace. And, uh, there's gonna be a lot of fun taking place, there's gonna be food, there're gonna be fun games, and, uh, there's no cost and, um, I just think it's a great thing that's being put on. And as far as the issue that took place, uh, I would say that no board should ever bring an issue to the city council and tell us to either vote for it or vote for it. We have a job to do, we have, uh, homework that we do. Everybody up here, I think, researched the issue and I wonder, Mr. President, how things might have worked out, uh, had that March third date that you were originally trying to set this meeting up for, uh, I wonder how that might have resolved this whole issue that we're going through right now. Uh, but we have a decision to make on these issues. We made a decision and I, it's not posturing, I'm not gonna get any other issues, but we look at it, we listen to the public, we do our homework, and we make a decision. I came up with an alternative and I was told it wasn't good enough. Perhaps it might have been helpful had the Utilities Board and Director and the Manager come to us and said, "This is what we're proposing, we would like to get your input upfront." Then there could have been some buy-in, but, uh, that didn't take place. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clean. And, uh, just a couple of things real quickly. Uh, Mayor, the opening of the parks was an incredible day. Uh, Dr. Showers, we started out with, um, the North League at your Shower Center up there and I noticed how the kids were all dressed alike, um, all in uniform. It was a great day. We left there and went to the, um, some other parks, but the one that struck me the most, aside from McGuckin where Dr. Robinson didn't get a chance to throw out the first softball, um, was the Miracle League. And we don't realize how blessed we are to be in good health and to have healthy children and children that, uh, don't have disabilities. Uh, those kids just really impressed me to watch them be able to play ball from whatever disability they may have. I know I may not be using the correct terminology because they have abilities, their abilities just may be different from our abilities. But Mayor, your park and recreation crew has done an impeccable job in terms of putting in a rubberized park where they can actually get around the bases. Um, it was just amazing. Uh, also, on a different note, on Monday, April the eighteenth, at six-thirty PM, uh, Hope Church, sixteen sixty-one Balch Road, Madison, it says Madison Address, but the church is in Huntsville, uh, trust me on that, we're having a town hall meeting. Um, this is at, uh, constituents in the Maple Ridge and Cross Creek subdivision. Those are areas, Mayor, that are in the western part of our city, so we're asking them to talk with neighbors, uh, to let them know that we'll be having a town hall meeting there. We want to see what their concerns are and, um, do whatever we can to help them. So again, my second town hall meeting for this year is Monday, April the eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at six-thirty PM, Hope Church, sixteen sixty-one Balch Road, uh, Madison, Alabama, three-five-seven-five-seven, which is in Huntsville.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
When you're finished.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Dr. Showers. Um, also, as it relates to utilities, um, and Mr. Russell, you made a good recommendation. Uh, I think it could be great, council members, as we move forward with future, uh, work sessions, that we, uh, reduce our proposals perhaps to writing, uh, maybe also if we get involvement from Huntsville Utilities. It doesn't mean that we change our stance, it's just that it makes for a smoother, uh, meeting where all of us will have copies of the different proposals, uh, that are being made. And I guess that comes from having served as president for nine years. So, thank you, uh, Mr. Russell, for that suggestion. And council members, I will be communicating with you, uh, through our administrative assistant, uh, Ms. Matt Williams, on any future, uh, work sessions that we need to have regarding that matter. And thank you. Dr. Showers.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I missed one item that I wanted to report. Uh, on, uh, April the thirtieth, Harold Tudman's award ceremony will be at the Ballroom at sixteen oh-five Pulaski Pike. This ceremony and award is being sponsored by Kids Table Inc. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. There isn't any unfinished business items for action. We're now at agenda item number fourteen, new business items for introduction, and these items, again, are just for introduction. Um, fourteen A is the introduction of an ordinance concerning the annexation of zero-point-four acres of land lying on the east side of Weatherford Drive and north of Harbin Road brought by planning. Fourteen B is the introduction of an ordinance amending section ten-point-eight, section ten-point-eighteen, and section nineteen of ordinance number zero-four-dash-three-one-five of the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual brought by Human Resources. Council members will take this up at our regular council meeting, uh, April the twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen. We're now at, uh, agenda item number fifteen, new business items for consideration. Does anybody wish to hold an item?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I wish to hold fifteen A, fifteen C is in Charlie, and fifteen Z is in Zebra.
Okay. Council members, so far, we have fifteen A, fifteen C, and fifteen Z as in Zebra. Any additional items? Fifteen B is a resolution commending the Operation Green Team Foundation for being ground, granted five-oh-one-C-three status by the Internal Revenue Service brought by administration. Fifteen D is a res, sorry, fifteen D has been deleted. Fifteen E is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke South Point Bank Letter of Credit number nine-five-zero-zero-four-zero-one-one for nature's landing at the Reserve Phase Four subdivision brought by the city attorney. Fifteen F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a Department of the Army right-of-way entry for survey and exploration of the off-site groundwater monitoring in the city of Huntsville brought by the city attorney. Fifteen G is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to seek a forfeiture of the surety bond issued by Ohio Casualty Insurance Company brought by the city attorney. Fifteen H is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to seek a forfeiture of the surety bond issued by Washington International Insurance Company brought by the city attorney. Fifteen I is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle the claim of Antonio Youngblood, a miner, by and through his mother, Kenya, Kenyanda C, brought by the city attorney. Fifteen J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a real estate agreement among the city of Huntsville, Greenby Enterprises LLC, Russ McDonald, Caroline Adaholt, and Lee Inger, Engler, for permanent utility and drainage easements and temporary construction easements brought by the city attorney. Fifteen K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a consent form waiving notice of the filing of a petition in the matter of the estate of Sheena Ann Valde, Valde-Raz, deceased and consenting to the sale of real estate property, of real property formerly owned by decedent, brought by the city attorney. Fifteen L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one and final, and final to the contract between the city of Huntsville and Tycon Inc. for Huntsville Depot ADA renovations located at three-twenty Church Street brought by General Services. Fifteen M is a request for authorization to advertise and field three landscape maintenance worker position brought by Landscape Management. Fifteen N is a authorization to field public safety dispatcher position to provide for authorized strength brought by the fire department. Fifteen O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and Little John at S and M E Company for Engineering Construction Administration Services for Chase Farm Boulevard Industrial Access Road Extension Project Number seven-one-dash-sixteen Romeo Delta Zero-One and L dot India Alpha Romeo Zero-four-two-zero-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-nine brought by Engineering. Fifteen P is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and A E, uh, Alpha Echo Charlie Oscar Mike Technical Services Inc. for Engineering Construction Administrative Services for Shield Road Bridge Improvement, Project Number sixty-five-dash-fourteen-dashBravo Romeo Zero-Two brought by Engineering. Fifteen Q is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number two to the agreement between the city of Huntsville, Johnson and Associates Consulting Engineers LLC for engineering services for November Papa Delta Echo Sierra permitting and inspections, John Hunt Park, Project Number sixty-five-dash-twelve Sierra Papa One-Nine brought by Public Works. Fifteen R is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number fifteen-six forty-two adopted and approved on September the tenth, two thousand and fifteen by changing the appropriated funding for various departments and funds brought by finance. Fifteen S is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations brought by finance. Fifteen T is a request to advertise the position of accounting and budget supervisor grade eighteen and to field at a higher than minimum rate if necessary brought by finance. Fifteen U is a request to advertise the position of payroll supervisor grade seventeen and to field at a higher than minimum rate if necessary brought by finance. Fifteen V is a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept the low biz meeting specification and effectuate agreement, um, on behalf of the city of Huntsville, a municipal corporation in the state of Alabama brought by finance. Fifteen W is a request for authorization to advertise and field three equipment technician two grade thirteen positions to field at a higher rate than minimum salary if necessary brought by General Services. Fifteen X is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to a special employment agreement between the city of Huntsville and James M. Bush brought by planning. Fifteen Y is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to a professional service contract between the city of Huntsville and Standards and Associates Inc. brought by police.
Mr. Chairman, I move for solidification approval of fifteen B and fifteen E through Y.
The Chair, Mr. Russell, has moved for approval of fifteen B, uh, D through Y, second by Dr. Robinson, ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. We're now at agenda item number sixteen, legal items transaction.
Mr. Chairman, I, I had held three items. I'd appreciate it if you let us.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. President. I mean, Mr. Mr. Russell.
Anytime.
It's coming again, trust me. Okay? Um, fifteen A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a special appropriation agreement between the city of Huntsville, Chamber of Commerce Huntsville, Madison County, brought by planning. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion.
I have questions for Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Mr. Davis, could you explain this, please?
Uh, yes. Council members, uh, it's been widely publicized that we're in a, uh, master plan update for Cummings Research Park. Uh, this would pay for our half of our commitment for that planned study. Uh, the study's about fifty percent complete. We're in joint venture with the Chamber of Commerce and Industrial Development Board. Uh, the contract amount of our half of the contract amount, I should say, is one hundred ninety-five thousand, and the funds do not come out of the general fund budget, it comes out of our research park funds.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Is the research, is the research park board involved or being communicated with on this?
Councilman Clean, yes, sir. Uh, they've been briefed, uh, no, two times. Uh, the plan's about sixty percent complete. They're, they've almost come back with recommendations and that'll come before the board and at some point we'll bring it before the council also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, council members? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Fifteen C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the consent of the city to assign, city to assignment of development agreement between the city of Huntsville and Clinton Road Partners LLC brought by administration.
Move to approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers.
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion.
Mr. President, I had questions about why this is necessary.
Yes. Mayor Battle or your, Mr. Hamilton?
Yes, members of council, you'll recall that, uh, a few weeks ago, you approved a development agreement and a ground lease with Clinton Road Partners, uh, specifically to, uh, undertake a retail development, uh, in the Clinton Street Garage. Uh, a, an element of that development agreement required city council approval, uh, for the assignment of the rights of, under that development agreement ground lease to, uh, another owner. The intent being that if, if ever Clinton Road Partners and, and the owners of that entity sought to sell the development to someone else, we would have the ability and city council would have the ability to approve or disapprove, uh, that transfer of ownership so that we could vet, uh, the potential owners and ensure that, uh, uh, there are someone that we want, we want to be in partnership with. Uh, the, the, the action before you doesn't in any way change that. In fact, it upholds, uh, the provisions of the existing development agreement. The lenders that Clinton Road Partners, uh, are engaged with require this action so that if in the event they were to foreclose on Clinton Road Partners, that bank, that lending agency would have the ability to continue with the development and have the exact same rights in the development agreement. So ultimately, ultimately what this does is reaffirms that we intend to, uh, hold up our side of the bargain in the development agreement, uh, and that if the bank were to, uh, have to foreclose on Clinton Road Partners and chose to continue with the development, we would continue to uphold our side of the bargain and obligate them to hold up the exact same side that Clinton Road Partners had signed up for. So this is really just, uh, it's an important document, but it essentially is a technicality within the process of Clinton Road Partners gaining their lending required to, uh, move forward with the development.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, Dr. Robinson?
I've, I've been doing this a short time, so I don't know, is this a common practice for us?
It, it is, and I'll tell you, there, there's some development agreements, uh, where, uh, where in, you know, in the, in the language, you actually give the mayor the authority to sign these kind of secondary documents. And in fact, the resolution tonight, uh, you do extend the authority to the mayor to, to sign other secondary documents that in no way change the nature of the development agreement so that we can bring this initial development to fruition with, with the conditions that you've already approved in the existing development agreement. So, uh, to, to get through this initial development, there should be no further actions brought to you. If, if at a subsequent time Clinton Road Partners sought to sell the development, as, as was really envisioned in the development agreement, that action would come back to council for approval. But, uh, so coming out of tonight, uh, with your approval, uh, we'll be able to move forward with this development and if there's any other items that are, you know, paperwork that's secondary to, uh, to executing this development agreement, the mayor would have the authority to sign those documents.
This is very common in.
I'm sorry, Mayor, Dr. Robinson, are you finished, man?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Battle.
Just to answer your question a little bit further, this is very common with, um, with commercial lending, uh, it gives you a subrogation right so that you can take over the rights of the person you're lending to if the person you're lending to falls out of their mortgage. Um, you do same, somewhat the same thing with your home because you can, all of a sudden give those rights up and those rights become your mortgage, mortgage dealer's rights.
Now, that takes me back to when mortgages were assumable. It sounds like this is kind of how that is working to some degree?
All this does is transfer the rights of, of the owner to the, uh, mortgagie if the mortgagie has to, uh, foreclose and the, and the owner, that would mean the owner goes out of business, it gives it just a transferable right.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion, council members? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Fifteen Z is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of Huntsville and the city of Huntsville Federal Building Authority for the relocation of Gate Nine on Redstone Arsenal, uh, brought by Urban Development. Is there a motion?
Would you approve?
Motion by Dr. Showers.
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson.
Mr. Chairman, I have questions.
Thank you. Um, Urban Development, Mr. Davis.
Uh, Mr. Davis, my questions are, uh, why do we care about this? Why are they moving Gate Nine back?
Uh, can I go back a little further than that, Councilman Russell? Uh, this council, back in two thousand eight, early two thousand nine, passed, uh, the enhanced use lease agreement between the Department of Army, uh, COPT, and the city of Huntsville, uh, to create Redstone Gateway. Uh, there were several capital action items within there that would occur at some point in time, uh, Gate Nine relocation being one of those. Uh, in that agreement originally, we were going to fully fund that with a TIF agreement in that document. Um, the good news is, is through, uh, continuing, here we are, seven years later and we're ready to do that. We've gotten federal approval from the Department of Army. Uh, Redstone has taken some preliminary actions to, to move this gate a mile south as the original plan of the UL. Uh, but the costs have risen such that now it's a regional partnership. Uh, we are putting our original one million dollars into that, and tonight you will be approving us to transfer that to Federal Building Authority as we committed back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Uh, but the importance of relocating the gate a mile south is tremendous. Uh, currently, uh, morning rush hour, if you travel eastbound on I five sixty-five, uh, the shoulders have been worn out for people pulling over wanting to go into the arsenal or into Redstone Gateway. Uh, moving this. Uh, moving this gate a mile south, uh, will alleviate that stacking on the interstate. Uh, through the UL process, we did a, uh, interchange justification study for the interchange of rideout road, I five sixty-five, to leave the gate in its current location and fix the interchange to do the same thing was a hundred and five million dollars. Uh, we're moving the gate almost a mile south for about eight million dollars to, to accomplish the same thing. Now, at some point in the future, we still think that interchange will need some type of capital improvement, more likely to be performed by the Federal Highway Administration, not here locally, uh, but, uh, there's, our usual joint venture of the BRAC Committee has done some fundraising, uh, Madison County, the City of Huntsville, Madison, and then Redstone Arsenal, it's, so it's a joint effort to move this. It's saving us money, it's saving all parties involved money, uh, from funding this. Originally, it would have been CLPT and the city, uh, so we would have split it, it, at the time that we passed the UL, that's my cost was five million, it's around eight. So, tonight, we're asking you to approve the million dollars, which what we would grant the Federal Building Authority to move this gate, uh, instead of what would have been four million dollars through the, the joint partnership.
And, Mr. Davis, refresh my memory, uh, why is the Federal Building Authority involved and why is the city providing them the money?
Uh, you know, we've used the Federal Building Authority numerous times to assist Redstone Arsenal, it's the easiest conduit for multiple entities, uh, to, to give a donation to, to, for a, a major, what we call a regional project, and, and then they can bid it much quicker than, you know, say Madison County giving us money and then, you know, a private investor like CLPT bringing all those parties together, federal, federal building authority's always been used in that manner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Any further discussion?
Mr. Davis, I want to just say that not only does it alleviate some of the traffic problem coming east into Huntsville on I five sixty-five, but Research Boulevard going, uh, from University Drive to I five sixty-five, people trying to go west, they can't get to that because the arsenal traffic is backed up, and for people who are trying to further access I five sixty-five and go east, uh, they can't get to that interchange either.
Yeah, there's some mornings, Research Park Boulevard backs up almost University Drive.
It does.
And, and so the southbound movement into the, into the gate in the mornings and the eastbound movement will greatly be enhanced, and then the westbound traffic, the loop, the flyover, uh, starts to stack up now also, so...
Absolutely.
Uh, it's kind of mission critical for our community, and not knowing a new BRAC, you know, may or may not be coming in the future, you know, we may, need to make those infrastructure investments like we have historically to secure what we have and possibly gain in the future.
Absolutely, thank you, sir. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Now, council members, we're at agenda item number, number sixteen, legal department item transactions, we have sixteen A, vacation of easement, sixteen A one is an ordinance, vacating a portion of a twenty-foot utility drainage easement, Lot Twelve, Block Eight, Green Bar Estates, plot book four, page sixty-nine, Rickwood subdivision, or Rickwood Drive, um, is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. showers. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. We're now at agenda item number seventeen, non-roster communication from the public. If you wish to address the council, please position yourself in proximity to the microphone. Uh, you'll have three minutes to address the council, state your name and address for the record, Ms. Reed.
Thank you. I had a question though, but it's, it's, it was on the agenda about Chamber of Commerce, one hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. Cummings Research Works more blighted than I thought it was. I'd like to know what they did for that one hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. You didn't tell that when you brought that up, but that'd be something I'd like to know about. Uh, it's blighted, but the whole city's still blighted, like I said, and you know, I want to go back and bring up something that y'all need to read your leases and your agreements, like Clinton Row and these ninety years agreements that you're giving these people in this city. You, you, you give them many, many years and you know they're not going to be living and not going to keep that property, you, you give them fifty to ninety years, I mean, you need to come down and get real and start reading these things. You don't know what can happen, you don't know who's going to own it and what city's going to look like, so I think you need to start using some common sense on some of this stuff. I want to go back to this, uh, utility raising, this agreement. The council voted, uh, for the, the meter readers, you've done voted for that, you've done give them some money, you done give them some okay for the meter readers, and then you go in and you've done voted for fiber, you done did that, you voted for that, every one of you, and Mr. Clean sits up there and keeps mumbling about those things when you done voted on them. You done voted, the man needed the money. I'm not, I'm not for the raise, but when you go out here and you stretch your necks and it's easy to sit up there and we're going to vote for this infrastructure, that infrastructure, why didn't you call him in here then as to what the cost was going to be and who's going to pay for it? Why'd you bring it up tonight? He needed the money tonight, you should have voted on it, but the same three PAC people, I've got to bring this up, or I'd be remiss if I didn't, the PAC deal, Clean, showers, and Culver voted me out of my district, so I couldn't run against Clean. The same PAC deal changed the president of the city council, you same PAC deal tonight, voted against it, and I know there's an election coming up, so why you wanted to move it from August to October, you tried to pass that election on these people and tried explaining why you didn't want that utility bill, I mean, I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you what I thought, you all are thinking up there. Have a good weekend and I do love you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed, and, uh, that one hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, from what I understand, went to one half of the study that the chamber provided. Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Bearden, if you state your name and address for the record, please.
Georgia Bearden, twenty-eight eleven Pilaski Pike Huntsville. Uh, thank you again, and I want to go on the record again, for the people that were not in here, uh, the question I'm asking does not involve President Culver, nah, Dr. showers, they are the only two persons up there who are willing to help me get some answers to my situation. They can't do it alone, but it has to be a team effort, and on ten-eight-sixteen, uh, council went on record saying that they would help me find some answers. That wasn't President Culver, he had not, the torch had not been passed to him then. And if I present, uh, the credible evidence before the council, which I did, um, that there's corruption and a cover-up and oversight agencies in Huntsville, somebody on the council should be concerned about that. When I give you that kind of information, you're a custodian of a cover-up. You, what are you going to do, just sit on it? Somebody should, uh, and I hope it's not a situation like it is with, uh, uh, our illustrious President Obama. Everything, uh, President and Dr. showers, uh, want to do and it's the right thing to do, uh, they don't have the support of the other members, I hope it's not a situation like that. See, I ha, I speculate because nobody up there will talk to me, so I have to call it what I think it is, and, and, and I do think it is racism, uh, I do think it's unfair treatment to a person, that what happened to me and dehumanized like I was by an agency here in Huntsville, that's city business, somebody ought to be concerned about it, uh, and shame on you if you're not. Uh, but again, uh, Councilman, uh, Culver and Councilman showers continue to enjoy, uh, the rewards of your good work.
Thank you. Ms. Bearden, your time is up, do you need another minute?
Just one second.
Council members?
Just one second.
Okay, thanks.
Um, I know nobody wants to do it, but the reason I'm here, I'm asking for answers just like you give everybody else, I'm asking for answers. I, I sit at home and see y'all come out of the, off the podium to help other people and give them answers, and I ask for answers and I don't get them, I call that discrimination, I don't know what you all call it, and I'm asking for some answers. I'm not asking you all to hire me an attorney, I'm not asking you to do me any favors, I'm just asking you to help me get some answers as to why I was treated the way that I was in a situation that was negligence, you all are aware that it was negligent, and nobody seems to want to say anything about it, everybody shuts down, that's all I'm asking, just like you do everybody else.
And, and thank you, Ms. Bearden, your, your time is up, thank you, ma'am.
Mr. President?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Clean.
Uh, I'm afraid I'm not familiar with the particulars of this situation, but is there anything that, that needs to be done? Do you have control of the issue? Is there any action the council needs to be taken? And again, I don't even know what the situation is, but is it being followed up?
Mr. President, before you respond...
Yes, sir.
I would, that our attorney, uh, after this meeting is over, if he would, uh, visit with Ms. Bearden and to know what her situation is.
And, thank you, Dr. showers. Um, Mayor Battle?
But, you know, um, Ms. Bearden, you might remember, we came to your house and we sat down with you and Mr. Bearden and talked to you, um, and you said that you had had a faulty pacemaker, and that faulty pacemaker had, had done some things to you that, um, that you felt were, were problematic, and, um, we advised you at that time that that was a civil matter, and you said you had gotten a lawyer and that you had a lawyer that, the lawyer was working on it, uh, and that you had been doing that. Um, I don't know how much further we can go, that was the only question I got out of you that day when we came to your house and sat down with you and talked to you and Mr. Bearden at the same time. Um, you know, eh, I'm not sure if there's anything that our attorney can do, be glad for him to talk to you, but I have a feeling that we'll have the same answer when, when we come out.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Battle, and your concerns certainly haven't been ignored, it's just that this particular body, uh, doesn't have the authority to do anything as it relates to that, um, and hopefully, uh, and we ran this by the previous attorney, um, Mr. Riley at his convenience will certainly be willing to get with you, and if there were to be something that we can do, ma'am, I can assure you that we can entertain that and bring it before this body, but just talking with you and looking at everything, there, there is nothing that this particular body can do except maybe, uh, advise you or recommend some other things that, you know, a private lawyer may have to help you with, Mr. Riley.
Ms. Bearden, uh, that has been stated correctly, I believe I heard you, uh, appear before the council, before I took office as well, uh, in one of the council meetings I attended, and I believe this is a situation where as much as the members of the council may sympathize with the position with what has happened to you, they cannot substitute themselves into the position of the court system, for instance, uh, the private court system, the circuit court clerk, the circuit court, uh, here in Madison County and such, there are different organizations and agencies of the government and each have their respective functions, and in this case, it, it sounds to me distinctly, just as been said, uh, that you had a, a cause of action or a private cause of action which you could bring a civil action to pursue, and I do not know whether you have done that or not, but I would not be able as the city attorney for Huntsville to bring that in your stead, nor would this body be able to do that as well, and so, uh, I would hope that you would, uh, not, uh, mistake our inability to provide the assistance you desire with lack of caring about what has happened to you, uh, but we just simply do not have the power to step in and make that, uh, make that all right, or make it all turn out as, as you would wish that it would.
Thank you, uh, Ms., Ms. Bearden...
I'll be happy to talk to you afterwards.
Right, it's a one-way communications, uh, I think we have one more person, uh, two more people, if anybody else wishes to address the council, please position yourself in proximity to the microphone, so we have two people left. State your name and address for the record, please.
Carol Cotton.
Yes, Ms. Cotton.
Still homeless, I do have a P O box, four six five three Huntsville three five eight one five. A medical issue, the manufacturer of the pacemaker, your doctor, if that's the person who installed it, because if it didn't happen on, you know, negligence of city, it's, has nothing to do with the city council, but anyway, I would like to commend all the students that were here earlier, um, I'm glad that you took the time to recognize their accomplishments, and I commend the Johnson basketball team for not only doing well ath, um, athletically, but also academically and, um, conduct and whatnot, and I'm glad his coach, their coach bragged on them because that is a good thing, because Johnson's been going through a lot in the last decade or so. Fair housing doesn't exist for all persons living within the city of Huntsville. On the Huntsville utilities matter, I honestly believe they should have come to the city council first and say, hey, we're looking at this, this is our proposal, before they went through the procedure, I don't know what your contract is with the TVA or with the procedure, that would, to me, make the most sense, and old saying, there's more than one way to count the ten, come up with ultimate ideas, I appreciate Bill Clean's and, um, Mr. Culver's suggestion. Ashlyn Residential, your heating and cooling and hot water here are your biggest users of electricity, and is TVA the only source of electricity? I mean, there's solar, there's all kinds of energy alternatives, are people in the city of Huntsville required to be on the grid, in other words, sign up for Huntsville utilities? And yes, there are people that can't afford it, and if they don't get the raise and they can't do their objectives, I never planned on being homeless, and without income, I can't not be there, and they talk about all these programs to help people get this, with that and the other, they don't exist, especially if you're single and you don't have kids and you're white and you went to Grissom High School, that kind of stuff just doesn't exist. You got to get a job with monetary income and a part-time job at minimum wage, twenty hours, you're talking five hundred eighty.
Ms., Ms. Cotton, your time is up, do you need another minute, ma'am?
I just, I think...
Council members?
She can have another minute.
Thank you, go ahead, Ms. Cotton, Ms. Cotton.
There are other alternatives, there's a city in California where the, many residents have installed solar as an alternative, and they, um, are producing theirs and the state requires local utility to buy excess energy from them, and they can't afford to do that because the citizens are generating more electricity. There are other options, uh, to be considered. Huntsville Times, about two years ago, there's a house down in District Three where he's basically off the grid, he, that uses very little, but there are alternatives.
Thank you, Ms. Cotton.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, and, sir, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Ron Robinson, twenty-four fifty-two, Mount Vernon Road.
Thank you.
Uh, I know that the city is looking into this new mosquito outbreak we have coming in our way later this summer, and I was, uh, the CDC came up with new things that they found, that it's not only affecting unborn babies with smaller heads, but it is affecting, they have two or three more, uh, findings that they have, that, uh, spinal meningitis and, and all kinds of stuff, and one thing that they said I never heard until yesterday, the... And one thing that they said I never heard until yesterday, that this mosquito is not like our normal mosquito where it grows in ponds and still water. They said this mosquito can spawn in a drop of water on top of a soda, soda pop lid. So that is, that's something new that I haven't heard, but it can spawn in just, in a eyedropper full of water. So I, I hope the city will find the ways and the means and the money to combat this stuff before it really gets a good foothold in Madison County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishes to address the council?
Move to adjourn.
Motion has been made, seconded by the Chair, we adjourn.